Good evening. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. Please join me in the flesh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to enter Executive Session to discuss negotiation with the East Aurora Civil Service Personnel Association, matters related to 12 particular employees, matters related to three particular students, the superintendent's evaluation, and the board evaluation.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. We are returning from Executive Session where we discuss matters related to 15 particular employees, matters related to three particular students, and negotiation with the East Aurora Civil Service Personnel. And stay tuned, we'll be getting to the rest of Executive Session after the meeting. Are there any agenda changes?
Yes, there's one. Under, excuse me, under Item 14, Item requiring Board Action, under C, we're going to remove EA 8010.01.
Do you want to also remove?
I missed that. Where are we?
Under Item requiring Board Action, C, Page 7, First Reading of Policies.
Yep.
8010.01 will be removed. And D, Page 10, 5110 will be removed. So 5110 remains in place. Page 10. I think our page numbers are different.
Okay.
We're 89.
Sorry, 9.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw we were talking about the other one.
Any other agenda changes? Are we, uh, not like that?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Any reports and discussion under this point? Okay. Moving on to Item 5, Items Requiring Board Action. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Sydney Surza to a 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of physical education as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? With the gentleman. Moved by Mr. Cassidy, seconded by Mr. Flowers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Can I say hello?
Hi, I'm Sydney. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity. I'm so excited to get started.
Congratulations and welcome. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Taryn McGinley to a 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of physical education as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. O'Whiler? Seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Is Taryn here?
Hi.
Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education appoint Alexis Redell to a 1.0 position in the tenure area of education of children with handicapping conditions. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Mrs. O'Whiler, seconded by Mr. Flowers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Congrats and welcome to Alexis. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Shelby Sealy to a 1.0 FTE in the tenure area of education of children with handicapping conditions as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. O'Whiler. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions?
Carried seven zero. Congrats and welcome to Shelby. Item E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Hannah Miller to a probationary 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of education of children with handicapping conditions as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Whiler. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Welcome Hannah. Item F, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Emma Callow to the probationary 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of elementary education as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Flowers. Seconded by Mrs. O'Whiler. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Am I here?
Yes.
Item G, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Rachel Lundmark to probationary 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of elementary education as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Flowers. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. And is Rachel? Item H, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Julie Wolford to a probationary 1.0 FTE within the tenure area of elementary education as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Proda. Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Whiler. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Julie here?
She'll be part of the press mail team.
Thank you, you're welcome. Moving on to Item 6, Superintendent's Come-Off.
So before we get to the retirements, which we'll do in just a moment, we have a couple special guests that were able to join us at the last minute. As many of you know, we had the opportunity for a group of our students to work with engineers from NASA to create a rocket that was then entered into a competition that happened this year in Huntsville, Alabama. And so we have two of the members of the team, we have Parker Madigan and Thomas Reichert with us. We're going to do just a brief presentation, just to give the board, you know, just a little bit of history of what happened and the process that they went through. So guys, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, go ahead.
Look very sharp.
Blow in the dark.
Yes, we do.
I am the club president and team leader for our NASA program.
And I'm Parker Madigan. I am the student safety officer for our NASA Student Launch Program.
And we'll be here recapping our experiences with NASA and showing you what we did.
So a quick team overview for our team that attended D-NASS Student Launch Challenge. Our team was the Flying Fathers composed of Thomas as club president and team leader. I am the student safety officer, as said previously. We had our lead manufacturer, William Ready, the club treasurer, Oliver Saxuk, his brother, Calvin Saxuk, and our team member, Adam McGraby.
So our previous participation was in the Moog Regional Rocketry Challenges. We did that for two years.
As well as the American Rocketry Challenge, which is what we did last year.
We placed 21st in the nation, which allowed us to do this competition. This is the NASA Student Launch Initiative that's listed here. Our accomplishments, second place overall, Moog Regional Rocketry Challenge 2023, and as I mentioned before, 21st in the nation with TARP. We also successfully completed this program, which is very rare for a high school team.
So through the Student Launch Initiative, they had an award ceremony on the fifth of this month, so June, which we were awarded with second place for the social media award. So we had the second best presentation of our progress through the program on social media. And we won first place of the 3D Printed Awards sponsored by Bastion Technologies for the best use of 3D printed parts in a rocket, which you can see up on our rocket end table there is any black components on the standing payload bay and the nose cone of our rocket at the tip.
So with the awards, most teams actually don't go into this competition winning any awards, so getting two is actually pretty impressive considering we're a first-year team. All right, so here we have our final launch video. We actually launched five total times with this, well, not this airframe. This airframe was launched three times, two times with a different airframe that actually hit a tree at 296 miles an hour. And basically, the whole airframe was shattered, everything was unusable, so we had to rebuild in like a week. And we had to re-launch in order to complete our FRR, which is our Flight Rateness Review. So that's our final airframe. It's got all of our signatures on it, it's even got Homer Hickam. If you've watched October Sky or read the book Rocket Boys, he signed it. But yeah, here's the final launch in Huntsville, Alabama. So this rocket went up to 4,500 feet. It reached speeds almost 400 miles an hour, 0.4 Mach. It successfully completed all of our goals. And we'll show you our payload data, well, our payload process video on the next slide. It's the Near Infrared Atmospheric Imaging Class at 300 feet degrees. So it's actually that black part standing up there that's our whole payload. It consists of an altimeter housing on the bottom section, along with our monitoring section where we have temperature, pressure, humidity sensors in here, and we also have three highly modified GoPros that only see in infrared.
So part of the reason this video likes very black and white is because the infrared was recorded in monochromatic spectrums, so that's why you don't have any RGB coloring in this video. From some of the sensors that were in our payload bay, we collected various temperature, pressure, and altitude data as we went up, which was just additional data that we were able to collect. The main goal of our rocket was actually the infrared video. Everything in the payload, including the recording of data, the construction of the suite, and the processing of data, was all developed by the team and made by the team.
And on this slide, we have three links, one's to the NASA coverage of our launch, one is our team coverage of the launch, and then our NASA interview. If we can, I'll try to email it to you guys, and you guys can forward it to whoever. But yeah. And then obviously, thank you to everyone who supported us along the way. We wouldn't have been able to make it here without all the support we had. There were so many people that helped us, and we really can't say thank you enough.
We had a couple notable contribute, contributions, excuse me, from various local companies and groups like East Aurora School District, the Educational Foundation, the Monus Club, Rotary Club, Moog, and Miller 3D.
Yeah. Miller 3D actually helped us print our nose cone because we do not have the capabilities to print a nose cone at that size, but they did a great job. They actually printed two of them because the first one was destroyed. But that one survived, and everything, everything's intact. We completed our mission, and we're glad to be here.
And I'll just add a few comments. This started off with a safety page application process that they had to go through in order to be accepted into the program, which was really overwhelming, which was a great job. Numerous trial and error, and I think that's the whole idea of the development of this type of engineering. But it came down to the wire, and even on the day of the launch, they were prepared to launch, and then they realized that they forgot a mirror or something.
Yeah, one of the lenses wasn't included.
So they took it off the launch pad, brought it back, and this is a very, I happen to be able to go, so I went to see the launch in Huntsville. It was really amazing. And so they're competing against 12 other schools that were accepted across the country, and gosh, maybe 20, at least 20 colleges.
I think it was more like 60.
60 colleges, there you go. And 60 colleges from across the country. So this is a stiff competition, and they just performed beautifully. So they realized that just at the last minute that this needed to be changed. They took the, they took the rocket apart, all the pieces out, with the lens back in, put it all back together, took it back out, and it was a perfect launch. And so I think that's the amazing part of this, is that the process that you went through was just, at times, I'm sure, kind of pushed you to your limit, but you stuck with it, and this is an amazing product, and we couldn't be more proud of your accomplishments. It's just quite incredible.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you so much. We've been following along and hearing the updates, and to have you both come and present was truly wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Again, this is certainly bittersweet. We have 10 retirees this year, which is, which is, which is a lot. And so as they came in, for me personally, this is always really hard to say goodbye. It's always hard for me to say goodbye, but the 10 people on the list, we couldn't be more grateful for the amazing work that they've done in the different areas that they have served the district has really spent quite exemplary. And so we would like to just take a few moments to recognize each one of them that is here with us today, and then we'll have a few minutes at the end for those who weren't able to join us. Again, I really can't thank them enough for what they've done, the contributions, the support they've provided for our students, and for collegiality, their willingness to support each other. It's really, this is an amazing place to work, and it's because the people in these 10 are really among the finest. And so we're super grateful for everything they've done. And so at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce our first retiree, which is Lori Sayhaki.
Hello, Lori.
Everybody can see her.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you want to slide it?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Nothing like failing a rocket scientist. I've seen, I've seen them speak, what, five times now between the rotary and this? And I think I finally, like, I'm starting to really understand this. And I love that, that our students are so much just smarter than I am. But now we're going to transition to Mrs. Lori Sayhaki here. Yeah, no, you have to stand up. Come on. You got this. So Lori was hired in September of 1986. That's 37 years, 37 years of dedication to the students and staff of East Aurora. Over the years, Lori has spent time in all four, even though there's now only three, all four of the East Aurora school buildings, Main Street Elementary, Parkdale Elementary, and the East Aurora Middle School. And then she was also the technology integrator, which allowed her to work at the East Aurora High School. So Lori has spent time in multiple, multiple grade levels. I wasn't sure if it was all of them, but pretty close, I think.
Yeah.
Case next, yep. As well as our boost coordinator and boost teacher, our gifted and talented curriculum coordinator. At the time, she was our social studies coordinator for elementary. She was the specialist team coordinator and a peer mentor. So as you can see, there's not too many people probably in the history of the East Aurora schools that has had more of an impact on both teachers and students over a 37-year career. So that's, that's pretty incredible. I wish you clap for that. So when, when I knew that I had to recognize Lori, the first thing I did is just ask a few people, what do you think of, what do you think of Lori Sayhaki? And it was really unanimous. Everyone said the same two or three words, which were the same two or three words that I thought. And the one that came out more than any was the word dynamic, and that's because she is dynamic. She's more than great. She always went above and beyond, and these are comments from myself and her colleagues. Some might say that she even went over the top a little bit, saying, her lessons were so jam-packed with content, but not only that, with fun and excitement. She made sure that the room was transformed into whatever topic that she was teaching, and she also transformed herself into different costumes, and of course, she usually walked around with vocabulary words taped all over her body. Usually, you took them all off.
Yes.
Lori always applied a fun twist to learning, and her students were always engaged. She devoted many extra hours to her profession, learning new technologies, sharing her knowledge with others, and preparing unbelievable lessons for both students and as a resource to other teachers. She has always continued to be, and continues to be, a very hard act to follow. Lori will be truly missed. She was a team player. She's always great welcoming to her new colleagues, and she would do anything she could to support everyone. She inspired many students, especially to be wild about words, that was her thing, wild about words, and should be proud of all the work that she has done. She made a difference in the lives of her students and colleagues. So on behalf of the East Aurora Middle School and the East Aurora School District, I would like to wish Lori nothing but good health and happiness in her retirement, and we hope that she creates many wonderful memories with her family, but we hope she's not a stranger. And we just want you to know, you are our friend and an inspiration to us.
Thank you. I just want to tell you that I have to give Matthew, because he is my administrator.
Oh.
I'm returning something. I'm going to let you open the box.
Oh, boy.
These are basic security keys that will get you into any room in any district. There's 13 of them that I've collected over my 37 years. And honestly, it's quite secure because it's noted as GM4 or PA1. I don't, I don't even know what doors they open. For me, they open doors of opportunity, and so I'm just very thankful that everyone here and the district itself has given me this opportunity for a very fulfilling career, and I appreciate everyone. So thank you so much.
Speaking on behalf of Brian Shoemaker is Mrs. Kowski.
Can I just bring by the hand, Brian? Brian first, so you could both stand up. Brian was hired as a teacher aide on January 3rd, 2020, joining his wife Beth as a dedicated member of our high school staff for the past three years. In his time here, Brian has been more than willing to do whatever was needed to support our students, our staff, me and Bill, anyone who needed a helping hand. He's the true definition of a team player, whether it be playing catch and release for our students coming and going from warm seat, or serving as a one-to-one teacher aide to fill in with a student, or just being a listening ear for a student who needs some extra support. There's really no rule that Brian wouldn't be willing to happily jump in and fill. Although I only worked with Brian this year, I feel like I'm constantly learning something new about him and all of the knowledge that he has in so many different areas. Early in the year, I found out that he was visiting classrooms to discuss finances and investments with students, something I know nothing about, but he does. He was sure to bring prizes with him, because we all know that high school kids still like prizes for everything. And then today, I even found out that apparently he's our microscope guy. So he comes in and fixes and repairs the microscopes for the science department before the year ready for the next school year, and he's going to come back next year to do that stuff. Brian has an ability to connect with and relate to all students in so many different ways, and while he has such a calm and quiet presence and never asks for anything, he's made such a huge impact here, and we're so thankful for his time with us. So thank you, Brian, for your service, and we wish you health and happiness in your retirement. And on to Beth, his wife. Beth was hired on February 18th, 2011, as a teacher aide, dedicating 12 years of service to Parkdale before making the switch to join us over at the high school for the remaining years of her career. Like Brian, Beth also is always willing to help out wherever is needed, and is always that extra set of eyes and ears that we all need to look out for our students. Beth is the type to follow every single rule and protocol, and will so miss her stopping in the office to say, I have a question, to always be sure that everything is exactly how it should be to better serve our students. I know I extra appreciated Beth's ability to look at things through such a careful lens, and even just in my first year here, she's given me so many ideas and ways to help our students. One of my first encounters with Beth was her noticing that students were getting really hungry at the end of the day before they were going to sports practice. So her idea was starting the idea of collecting extra unused fruit from the cafeteria and keeping fruit rolls in the office for students to stop by, which reminds me of something at like Grandma's house, which is the bowl that you enter. And I can't even tell you how many students and even adults stopped by to grab their piece of fruit. Everyone always fights over the pears because we know those are like the best to find. She has such a kind heart and cares so deeply about every child in our building, and while her colleagues will definitely miss her for that, they'll certainly miss her and Brian for their cooking. I don't think staff birthday celebrations will ever be the same. The Shoemakers are one of those households where no matter what they cook or bake, you know if it's coming from their house, it will be delicious. And feel free to still join staff birthdays next year. I'll send you the email.
I told the top administration.
But Beth, we're so thankful for your service, and you'll be missed in the halls of DHS. Both of you, we hope you enjoy your retirement together, and we'll hold each other for all you guys.
Thank you.
Next up, Brian Lombardo will speak on behalf of Chris Shutram.
She just looked back at me and said, are you talking about me? I said, no, I passed. And then Brian said that, she called me a liar. That, I think, sums up our relationship pretty well. Coach, everyone else was right here. Coach, mentor, club moderator, peer counselor, mainly for me, department head, New York State Teacher of the Year, she won that. Are all adjectives that accurately describe the legend, Chris Shutram. However, when talking about her time here at East Aurora, all 27 years.
And three months.
And three months. There are no more truer words than caring teacher. Take the story of a current senior. Tried some sports as a freshman, hasn't played a sport since after his freshman year. Excelled in our music program. He was then introduced to Chris Shutram's class the last two years, and even with the music background, has chosen physical education as his college major. A field dominated by individuals who view themselves as athletes, this soon is going into the field because of the teacher, because of who Chris Shutram is. The leader, the energy, the smile, the passion. The leader, the energy, the smile, the passion. There is no higher compliment than that. You would think these stories are rare examples, yet they are not. The students who come back to visit the hallways always find me and go, wear shoes. Her club's generally the highest enrollment, maybe because they periodically leave school, but really because of shoe. She has been the face of the physical education department since she was hired, and my biggest fear is we will all be lost without her challenging us every day. My five years here at EA has given me a new perspective on PE, watching shoe teach and interacting with her students. However, as much as she enjoys being here, we enjoy having her here, and as much fun as we have, and all the fun we will miss, nothing lights up her face as when she talks about her family and grandchildren. This is the only reason shoe would give this up. I mean, how could she leave me in the rest of the department? As much as she was done, and as much as she could still do, her desire is with her family where it should be. Chris, go give those grandkids all the snuggles they want. You will be missed but not forgotten, and enjoy your family and your time.
I just keep thinking of one, I don't think I need that. One thing, it was about the same exact area where I stood when we became teachers, and then when we became tenured, and Howard Smith was here, and Fred Thornley was here, so there's just this whole circle of life in East Aurora, it's just better and better every year. So thanks, thanks to all of you, everybody. Most importantly, thank you to my family, my husband.
My name is Merzloch, will speak on behalf of James Taylor.
So, some of you may not know, and I know I didn't know, when I was a student in high school, that there is a, a team of individuals that come to all of our schools when everybody else is gone, and basically do a reset for the next day. I just thought it was a couple of the custodians that you saw wandering around the halls during the day, they just kind of cleaned up after us, messy students, and that's truly not the case. In fact, there's an entire team of folks, custodians, labors, and cleaners, and that's where James comes in. He was hired, he is a laborer in August of 2003, and he'll be departing August 2023. So right at twenty years. He is not seen by many people, but he, trust me, you, you get to experience his work every day. When students and teachers and administrators walk through those hallways, what you don't see is because of folks like James. He ensures that the hallways are clean, that the paper towels are there, that the light bulbs have been changed, and you don't notice it unless he's not doing his job. And so the goal is kind of not to notice you. That means you're doing a job well done. I haven't worked in the district very long, but there's a few things I do know about James. He cares very much for his wife, his wife Kathy, and his twin boys, Fred and James, Fred being the older one by four minutes.
Yeah, I love it.
All right. The other thing I learned about James is he likes to come to work early, sometimes a little bit too early. We started a new electronic swiping, as Joanne is very fond of, and we had to make sure James understood, it's okay to be at the school early to read your paper, but don't swipe in that early, right? My overtime budget's not that big. From all of us within buildings and grounds, and from the men and women of the East Aurora School District, thank you for what you do. I know it's not always seen, but trust me, it is noticed every day, day in and day out. Godspeed to you and your family, and in good health.
Thank you.
And, and next up is Bill Roberts will speak on behalf of Jason Zedbergen.
I want to start by congratulating Lori and Matt and Brian and Chris and Jim. I'm feeling a little old here. I feel like we've, we've spent our entire careers together in many ways, and Jim, I'll, I'll say that as, as much as you stay quiet in doing your work, I know that I've scared the heck out of you.
On one occasion.
Yes, countless occasions, as I sneak up behind you after, after hours, right? And it's, it's good to see the boys, and I'll be super proud of the two of you after many, many stories. Congratulations to everybody. But I have the honor to recognize Jason Zedbergen. And Jason joined our staff September fourth, 2001, arguably the most talented class to ever start at East Aurora High School in decades, centuries. During his time with us as a wealth of knowledge and a willingness to take on a challenge, he has taught everything in the English curriculum, most recently landing and excelling as an expert in AP Lit, AP Research, Global Literature, and English Ten. And as I was putting those together, it's still just overwhelming that he took on all of those classes at one time. He was the creator and guiding force for our Global Leadership Academy and our AP Capstone Programs. Over the years, he's established a reputation for integrity and dependability second to none, and managed to make many friends along the way, and you can tell by those that showed up today for me. As department chair for over a decade, Jason has led our English department to be better instructors, better creators of programming, always ready to be their champion, whether it was for new technology, an outside classroom, or a voice of reason. His unwavering support and quiet flavor of leadership taught our students and his colleagues how to be a better human being, not just directly, but by modeling. His kindness, his sincerity in every single interaction of affair, through listening, acknowledging, researching, coming back to the table with better forms and ideas. One of his longtime colleagues, who may or may not be videotaping this, said it best. She said, I had a unique benefit of collaborating and co-teaching with Jason. I have to say, the partnership was definitely lopsided. Jason drew the short straw in that department shuffle. While I like to say that students benefited most from our partnership, I have to be honest and say, I benefited just as much. His quiet calmness was a great balance to my energetic loudness. His thoughtful interpretations provided counterpoint to my outlandish tomfoolery. His patience outweighed my impatience. His wisdom prevailed over my silliness. His was the voice of reason, mine was the voice of volume. Did you get that outcome? Outside of the classroom, to name just a few, Jason was the department chair, as I mentioned, yearbook advisor, literary magazine advisor, curriculum coordinator, peer mentor, SAT advisor, and from time to time traveled the world with his students. If the students needed his participation in leadership, he was always there for them. In closing, over the years, many of us have said, what would Jason do? As cliché as it sounds, he believes in self-improvement for the benefit of the students' improvement. At East Aurora High School, we believe that many aspects of our success, of our school and of our department, directly grew from Jason. Jason will be missed in education and has without a doubt earned his retirement, again by the number of faculty members that are here tonight to honor him, and most recently, our graduation planning committee selected Jason to perform the reflections of the class of 2023 at our ceremony next Saturday. You can see the lasting legacy that he has left at East Aurora High School. We thank him for his many years of service. We hope that you will now have time to read, to write, and to be with his family, and we wish him the best in your retirement.
There's a few people that were unable to join us tonight, but we'd like to just take a few moments to recognize them at this time. First up is Mrs. Matzola, who will be recognizing Heather Deach.
Sure. On behalf of Parkdale, I would like to share heartfelt appreciation for Heather Deach's dedication and outstanding contribution to Parkdale's general music program. Heather started in East Aurora about twenty-four years ago and has worked in support of the high school musical. She was at the middle school for her first part of her career, a couple of years there, and of course, she spent the bulk of her years at Parkdale. Her performances were a true testimony to her talent and creativity as she guided some of our very youngest students to showcase their musical talents. Through her guidance and encouragement, children could shine brightly on the stage, leaving everlasting memories in the hearts of all who attended her concerts. Heather's shown an exceptional gift for creating fabulous songs. In fact, most notably, she was the one who created many, many, many of our retirees' songs. So while she's not here, and of course, I wouldn't dare try to create a song for her to sing, we have a little surprise for her at the end of the year. We've created a nice little melody for Heather to celebrate her career. So please join me in honoring Heather Deach.
Next up is Joanne George, who will recognize Donna Corl.
Yes. Donna Corl has been our payroll clerk for sixteen years. She was hired at East Aurora in September of 2007, and has had, has been dedicated to the East Aurora School family, faculty, and staff. Donna's presence has been an integral part of our business office for sixteen years. Her unwavering and meticulous attention and commitment has made our payroll process operate as a well-boiled machine. She has served as a reliable source of support and guidance for all who have had the privilege to work alongside of her. Her willingness to go the extra mile to ensure that each payroll was and is accurate and complete goes without saying. As we bid Donna farewell, we acknowledge all of her work and the foundations and processes she has cultivated that will help Sarah, our new payroll clerk, find success in her new journey as the district's payroll clerk. Now as she embarks on this new chapter of her life, we hope it is filled with the much-earned and deserved joy, relaxation, and fulfillment this time can afford her. May each day bring her the satisfaction of knowing her efforts have made a difference in the lives of others. I extend our deepest gratitude for her tireless work, unwavering dedication, and invaluable contributions to the business office. Congratulations, Donna. You will be missed.
And next up is Kristy Mazzano, will recognize Maria.
Thank you. Mary Patac is our data coordinator and power school guru, but she is also the knower of all things. She knows all of our buildings, she knows all of our schedules. She knows everything that we need, and the gap that she will be leaving in our department is enormous. I knew the day that she announced she was having a grandbaby that our time with her was limited, and she is going to leave us to become the happiest grandmother and retiree that East Aurora's probably produced. Mary's been lucky enough to be the data coordinator in our department since 2018. She has taken on a role that is completely independent. There is no one in our district that can do what Mary does, and we recognize her daily for it. She, she is leaving a gaping hole. We are very lucky to have her for our scheduling, for our grading, for our report cards, for our state reporting, for our audit reporting, and so a myriad of other, other things. Again, working in the background, as Mark likes to call the stage crew, where you don't see us, but it's because of her work that so much is able to move forward with grants, with proposals, with reports, with parent communication. We, we rely on her heavily and know that she is an ideal person to be in that job. Mary is a kind, hardworking, independent, honest, sincere, but she will tell you like it is. So if you want to know, she is going to give you this, you an answer. And I think that's what I appreciate from her the most, is her truthfulness and her ability to communicate concisely, clearly, and work on her own. She, it does not need any of us around, we are just, I mean, I love that about her. I'm very proud to have worked with her for the year and a half that I've had. I've learned so much from this wonderful woman who steers the ship very quietly. She's been a role model for the rest of my department who are newer. She has given us someone to look forward to, someone who's shown responsibility, maturity, and kindness, and a very dedicated passion for East Aurora and, and her role in East Aurora. So I am so excited that we've had time with her. I hope her experiences in the future are countless and lovely, and that she continues to come back to help us, because we'll even fake problems just so we can have her back. But she's a wonderful woman who is EA through and through, and I, she will be terribly missed from her.
Andrea Parker will speak on behalf of Patty Savitt.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the retirees in the room tonight, very well deserved. So Patty was hired on September first, 1999, and has been a dedicated teacher aide here in East Aurora for the last twenty-four wonderful years. Even after her official retirement in February, she has been back to our building two sub several times, because she just finds a home there. This year, she had the opportunity to work with our youngest and newest pre-K students, and I'm sure that this year alone has left her with a lot of really great memories to end her time here in East Aurora. She is thoughtful, cares deeply for the children, she's loving, and is extremely hardworking in everything she does. On behalf of Parkdale and East Aurora, we want to wish Patty good health, happiness, and lots of relaxation. We're gonna miss seeing her on a daily basis, but know that she'll visit us on occasion. So congratulations, Patty, to a very well-deserved...
Before we get to the cupcakes, the celebration, just again, want to thank our retirees. As, as we go through and hear these speeches, I, I've been here for twenty years, so I've, I've worked with, with all of these people for a long time, and I've always been grateful, but then to hear this again, it just reminds you about how impactful each and every one of them is in their own special way. Sometimes it's in the classroom, sometimes it's behind the scenes, but that's what it takes to make a great district, right? It's all of these amazing people coming together and working together and just supporting each other on a daily basis that really makes the difference for our kids. And so to, to all of you, I'm, I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to, to work with you, and it really has to have a privilege, and I am so, so deeply grateful to be here and to be here, and so you're gonna be really terribly missed, and we thank you for your great work. And so before we get to the cupcakes, just one more thing, if we can have the retirees who are here for a quick picture, and then we'll...
All right, folks, we're going to get back to the business of our meeting. Thank you all. Congrats again to our retirees. Item nine, board president, board member comment and committee report. I was going to say quickly, thank you to our retreat committee and our administrators. Retreat, what did that let me? Two weeks ago? I don't remember. Anyway, thank you all, and thank you especially to everyone for their extra time. It was a longer retreat, so much important, and I'm grateful to everyone for their participation and engagement. We haven't had one in quite a while, so that was very valuable, great information was shared, and the camaraderie is not to be beat.
The other thing I wanted to say about the workshop was that the foresight thinking profile was such an excellent way to explain how each of us can do. And after we finished the exercise, when we got together as a board and discussed, okay, which one is for you, which one is for, we discussed that. It really gave insight into how each of us differs, yet is similar in strengths and our weaknesses. I thought that was such an incredible job. So I know Ms. Lyons is not here, but for everyone else who was heavily involved, thank you very much. I also attended the first annual high school senior award and scholarship night last week, and this was a way to celebrate all the seniors this year without the pressure of time constraints at a normal graduation ceremony. And Brian explained really nicely how, keeping with Roy Cross theme, there's the hand, heart, and head. So each student in the subjects, or each subject had a student receive a hand award, a heart award, and a head award. And this allowed kids that weren't necessarily the top five or 10 academically in the class still get awards. So it was really, really nice to see so many kids win awards that night. It was a great, great night. So thank you for all those people who were involved with that. Textbook committee met, it may be one second, to discuss the new P, new universal PK curriculum. Nine members of our staff partnered with Springville and Holland. So Ms. Lyons invited the two other districts to come and spend a whole day meeting with five different companies concerning curriculum. And they decided on Scholeastic PK on my way. This curriculum has math, it has social-emotional learning, there are parent resources, there's a daily parent communication through their chat band. Each classroom gets 100 new books, the exact same books, which the committee thought was pounding, so they're really thrilled with that. They already use my Big World magazine, which is by Scholeastic, and Scholeastic spent the last 10 years researching the curriculum, and this is what they came up with. So it sounded like a really, really good curriculum that the universal PK is going to be using. And the safety committee met last week, June 8, for a special meeting for the review of the district's safety plan. And all of our state requirements were met for '23, '24. It is currently, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ross, it is currently up and for public meetings, for public comments, and then the reorg meeting in July, we will be approving it. And we have a parent liaison on our committee who, his career is with emergency management. He is an invaluable asset to this committee, and I continue to appreciate him this year.
I'm glad, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ross, for having me today.
Echo, the Board of Education retreat, this was my first one. It was very educational as far as how to work together as a team and what we learned. That was excellent. I did attend the band concerts for the high school and the middle school, and I wanted to just give a shout out to the students and the directors. It was, they were once again excellent, and it's been meaning to see progress every year. And the textbook committee, I attended that as well. That was the thing that I'm once again impressed by, and I'm not sure that people know, is just the amount of time and energy and thought and research that is put into just one single book even, much less a whole curriculum. So I was once again really impressed with that and excited about this program, actually.
So again, the musical performances were excellent. The board retreat was fantastic. A couple other things that I attended that I wanted to point out, the policy committee, surprise, surprise, we met and reviewed policies. It was just another day in paradise, and we got through the policies. We made our first trip through the book, and it's pretty exciting. We made our first trip through the book, and it's pretty exciting. It's really been a rewarding process, so partnership with everyone who's been involved. I attended the high school spring athlete signing event, which was fantastic. I loved that we're, you know, highlighting those kids who are going on to compete at the athletic level, because the percentage of kids that do that is very small. So it's worth, it's worth highlighting and reporting off their successes. I absolutely loved the ceremony for the outdoor classroom out front with the foundation. That classroom, that was like it's been there forever, and it's going to be such a huge addition, not just to the school, just for, but the community as a whole. Last night I went to the film festival at the Aurora Theater, and a fantastic job the kids did. I know that it went out on social media today that the movies are available online on YouTube. If you have a chance, my family still goes back and watches some from past years that are on there, so highly recommend checking those out. One thing, the larger thing, I had a delicate assembly meeting for Erie County Association of School Boards on May 25th. And a couple things that I just want to highlight from there, the legislative committee is going to be sending out a survey to talk, to find out what priorities the districts are involved in, are interested in them adding for this upcoming year. So we'll receive that, I believe it'll come to you, and then we'll be able to have our input on that. Additionally, the legislative committee met with Senator Galvin. And one of the things I came out of that was conversations about the Child Victims Act and the cases that are starting to settle, and the impact that those are going to have on school districts, because not all of them are going to be able to be covered by insurance. And Senator Galvin assured them that's being talked about and ways to help the districts as these really start to snowball and really start to come out, you know, trying to find some sort of a, an aid model that may follow like the transportation aid, where it's funded in the following year. So I think that's something for us to keep an eye on and just be aware of. It sounded very encouraging. Another thing was the NISBA convention is coming up, and it's going to be in Buffalo. And so Erie County Association of School Boards is looking to form a committee, and they'll be reaching out to the school districts to try to get people from different school districts involved in helping to identify, you know, how we on a local role can, you know, play a role in all of that. Last thing is the fun, you know, one of the fun parts about the round robin, where all the districts, district representatives share something. I just want to point out a couple things that Kenton shared, because I know one of them I mentioned last year, and it struck me again, their breakfast with the board, right? So they invite the, they invite the public to come and have breakfast with them. And they wrap into that a bus tour, similar to the one that Mr. Brunson does for our new, new student. And, and theirs is geared around the buildings, the school buildings, or former buildings or locations of former buildings in their district. And also just showing people the boundaries of their district, because it's, you know, clearly different than ours. But I thought that was a great way to engage the public and get them into our buildings and make them feel like, yeah, this is not just a place where the kids go, this is a place where we can go and where we belong as well. The other one was, they had a school, during the school day, they had a unified basketball game. And they invited all of the students to come attend, because not all the students can go to the night games. And it was Ken West versus Ken East unified. And, and I thought that was pretty amazing. I thought, what a great way to really highlight that unified program. Aside from that, I really don't have anything to say.
Kind of you to cede your time, too.
Thank you. Couple things. Many thanks to all the people that contributed to the creation of the outdoor gathering space and classroom. I was in attendance as well at the ceremony, and there's just too many people to thank all at once. But one thing the foundation wants to say is how much it appreciates the Board of Education's support for this. I know that in a lot of districts, there might have been nail biting associated with an outside corporation building something on your site, but you trusted that we would do it well, and we appreciate that trust and that confidence. I also attended the senior awards and scholarship ceremony. I represented the Quanis Club, giving two $1,000 scholarships. And then later in the ceremony, I represented the East Aurora Educational Foundation and awarded $186,000. Six of our seniors will receive $30,000 to help them with their college education each. We also did the Sujimoto Award, which was, which was established last year in honor of Mary Sujimoto, a graduate of East Aurora by his family and the foundation that he represented. And, and a couple of awards in memory of Jennifer Everett and Jim Ford that are given each year. So it was, it was a nice group of students I was with. And just, just to follow up a little bit on my concern about food insecurity, I did a little research with the help of Mark Ambready and Paul Blowers, and just to give you a couple little bits of information that you can tuck away for future reference. Now that the pandemic is over and we're back to a normal food service program, we are averaging, serving about 30 breakfasts a day in each building, about 30 breakfasts a day in each building. During the pandemic, when breakfast was free, we served an average of 120 breakfasts a day in each building. And so this just shows you that three or four times as many students were getting breakfast from the school program during the time when it was free, as opposed to when it has to be paid for. I would also like to point out that we have a fund balance in this account of over $380,000. So in my view, there's, there are, there's resources to be able to address this issue in some way. And I hope that we'll be able, when we talk about committees, to talk about how we might establish a working group to look into the notion of helping students to start off the day with a good breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. I think everyone has covered, all things covered. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, I have one part of our celebration that I'm very sorry, I got caught up in all the excitement with our retirees. Recently, the Association of, West New York Association, I'm sorry, the Association of School Business Officials recommended Joanne George as the Western New York School Business Official of the Year. So we wanted to.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
On that note, are there any administrators who have anything to share this evening? Nobody?
Kevin McCarthy came in for an assembly, and it was basically a child's first rock concert. So we had to listen to two of those, so we're a little set today. But that was courtesy of the PTO. And then on Monday, they also, we celebrated our school-wide assembly for reaching our fundraising goal from the PTO fundraiser. The Buffalo Museum of Science put on a couple of assemblies, where our youngest students learned about temperatures below freezing, and they exploded some things. And then our older students learned about physics, and there were hoverboards and balloon launches. So it's been a really fun week at Parkdale.
Yeah, I just want to bring to the board a reminder, talk to, first, thank you for the support this year, kind of my first year in athletics. I thought I'd give a quick, very short summary of the spring season, as we have boys and girls track both in the team section titles, boys lacrosse, and one of the more impressive games I've seen, win the boys' section title. And I also feel we should highlight as well the girls' four-by-18 this past weekend state meeting in Middleton, they, or Middleton, the Caitlin Hope, Amelia O'Leary, Riley Pierce, and Hope Owens, won the state title in the four-by-18. I know it's kind of been, Walt and Marty have kind of been trying for that race specifically for about 20 years now. So they, they won the first state title in school history for a night, so just kind of want to give that one quick credit to them, and hopefully I'm sure we'll have all those section champions in when we hit the fall and fall season. About that state championship team, they will all be here next year for that ceremony, so.
We'll be bringing them in, and we'll be bringing them back in the fall. It was kind of a tight turnaround to get them here tonight, but they'll be back with us in the fall.
We have some individual section, six track championships too. Megan Cassie won the Pataplon. Shane Frazier won the 3200, Amelia O'Leary won the 3K. And then there are other state qualifiers as well, too, so.
Do you know what the winning time was by chance? Do you know what the winning time was?
I believe they were at 9:1910. So they've actually had a few faster teams than that in the past.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But just.
Yeah, that's awesome.
They kind of got.
Or D, was it D2, D1, or?
They were sixth overall.
Sixth overall.
In the Federation, and then the state champion at D2.
Awesome. Great, neat. Thank you very much. Congrats to our athletes. All right, we are moving on. We do not have community comments tonight. Thank you.
Actually, I would like to say again, thank you to Bill and Matt for making sure that I still had kids through the chicken barbecue, because that was, I know you can't, but everything that you guys did was helpful, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Because at the last minute, we had to pull the kids because of the weather, because the weather, because of the, the, the.
The air quality.
Yeah, the air quality was so bad. So we left Sean like at 3 o'clock in the afternoon with 26 open slots to volunteers, and somehow they came through, so we appreciate it. Thank you. You saved me with the Quanis, because they were. And as a member, that wouldn't have been hurt.
Thank you. I did not, maybe I assumed you didn't have a comment.
I didn't until.
Less than learned, I won't do that again. Item 12, we're moving on to reports and discussion items. I think we're on.
I think we're going to go to B, if you don't mind, because they've been waiting so patiently.
I know.
Thank you for being here. I should have gave you the heads up, come an hour later. I apologize for that. But today we have John McGuire and Richard Labrie with us, and we went through a special education audit, and these two gentlemen have done a really thorough job, me, people across the districts, we put that report together that we sent you as part of the board packet. So they're here tonight to kind of do a brief overview and then answer questions.
And knowing that you have the after-meeting executive session, you'll be pleased to know we're going to get through this in under two hours. First of all, let me just acknowledge that watching you celebrate the careers of your colleagues in the district was inspiring and also very consistent with our experience in partnering with your district. Everyone who came to this process came to it in a forthcoming, professional, and welcoming way. It made our work not only easier and possible, but it was very pleasant, a very pleasant experience throughout. And we were in all of your schools, district offices, spoke with all kinds of people in all kinds of schools. It was just a very, very engaging and positive experience. Appreciate it. I'm going to give you the short version of our introduction of ourselves. Rich?
Rich Labrie, I've been with DEA since its inception. I'm a senior associate. Prior to that, I was, in your language, a BOSI's superintendent for 27 years. Ran the largest of them in Massachusetts. We were the most multipurpose. We ran 29 special ed programs. We did school transportation for seven school districts, transporting about 19,000 students a day. Ran 279 buses, hired drivers, our own drivers. And we did Medicaid billing for 39 municipalities in Western Massachusetts and North Central Connecticut. And I've been doing this for about 12 years, consulting since my retirement.
He used to be six foot five. Again, my career is a special education teacher, working with emotionally disturbed adolescents in urban high schools. Moved from that into directorships for special programs, and then into assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction roles, and then continued in schools positions, from which I retired out in Albany County in 2010, and have since been working with my colleagues in alliance education. I've been 53 years in education. I've been into hundreds upon hundreds of board meetings. This is the first one with a rock at launch. Purpose of our presentation primarily tonight is to tell you a little bit about our methodology, how we approach the work, give you some contextual information, key findings, and we don't call recommendations so much as areas of opportunity that the district may want to consider, and then to respond to any questions or comments you may have. The areas, the scope of the work, if you will, with which we were charged was to look at the areas of related services provision, utilization of paraprofessionals, out-of-district placements of students with disabilities, your continuum of services within the district, the organizational structure for district administration and coordination of special programs and services, and also the financial end with particular attention to Medicaid and transportation. And that's Rich's area of expertise, and you'll be talking to that. This report and your full report are organized similarly in terms of organizational considerations and your continuum of supports, both those findings and opportunities that we discussed. And the financial pieces that Rich is going to talk to are configured somewhat similarly, but unique because of the content. Our methodology is somewhat unique. When you invite consultants in to do an analysis, you'd expect them to do a lot of quantitative data analysis, and we do. But we don't believe you can do the work well without also attending to the climate and culture of the district and its various schools. Everything that happens in this people-intensive enterprise happens in a people context. We believe to ignore that is to miss an essential part of the work. We interviewed 51 individuals in all of those various related roles. They are confidential interviews. We never use people's names or job titles in our reporting, as you've already seen, I believe. Questions are tailored to the individual roles of the interviewees. We use scripted interviews. We try to discipline ourselves to stay pretty much on that script, but we encourage the respondents to take the conversation in any direction they feel is relevant. We did comparative analyses of other districts within Erie County across New York State, and extensive document reviews included, so much of these. And just for the record, yes, we do enter into confidentiality, non-disclosure agreements to protect the confidentiality of students and so forth. Okay, so under organizational considerations, our findings include these points. We ask about ownership for all students by all adults. To what extent do all of the adults in this, we get in school, see students with disabilities, for example, as their students? What we were told is that the district has not yet perceived, achieved a pervasive culture of ownership, but that we have come a long way, so to speak, and the trajectory is positive, that more and more people each year are seeing students with disabilities in their classrooms, more and more are collaborating with special area people, and that those collaborations and those integrated offerings for students are contributing to more and more ownership for all students by all adults. That puts you in league and ahead of the majority of districts with whom we partner. The relationship between general ed and special ed in the district was reported to be very positive at the district office level, in part attributable to the current administration, and also variable, but quite positive throughout the schools. And again, that relationship paralleling the ownership issue, the relationship is best among those colleagues who've had an opportunity to collaborate, generalists and specialists together. Interviewees indicated that the district, and it was appreciation for this, does provide sufficient instructional supplies, materials, technologies, and so forth to enable the teaching and learning process. And the percentage of students with disabilities who are spending at least 80% of their school day with non-disabled peers in general education settings has increased dramatically over the last five years. the last five years from 13.1% to 55%. Still room for improvement there, but a pretty significant leap. Some areas of opportunity related to this organizational consideration. We, we recommend consideration of, and these are not, you know, cookie cutters, you can make them your own, but consideration of developing professional learning communities at each school that involve an integration of special education and regular education personnel, a mission statement that explicitly contains components of both special ed and general ed. If contractual parameters allow, including ownership, behaviors that evidence ownership for all students as part of the appraisal process. And again, we know that contracts vary from district to district. As new teachers are hired, in terms of continuing to work toward that pervasive culture of ownership, make it explicitly clear right from the job posting through the interview process, through the job offer and the new teacher orientation, that this is an expectation. It's best practice. We will be expecting this of you regardless of the specific role that you are hired for. To enhance the education and engagement with parents, we recommend that you consider having building principal take the lead role in rotating building meetings for parents. In the CSE process, this was a positive area of celebration. Respondents reported that the processes and procedures of the CSE, the Committee Against Special Ed, are uniform and consistent and understood by stakeholders. That basic essential concepts such as free appropriate public education and least restrictive environment are not only understood, but they are either explicitly discussed or inherently a part of all the decisions of the CSE. It was noted that building administrators, and this is not to, to an evaluation of any personnel, by the way, great people, not all have a significant background in special education in order to be leaders for special ed and facilitators in their buildings. And we have some thoughts about that. There was not an awareness, and this will be an important point, this is a big deal for us, of clearly articulated written program descriptions and eligibility and exit guidelines that are consistently applied. There are lots of reasons, and your time is tight tonight, so I won't belabor it, but that's an important point for your consideration. With respect to models of service delivery, a review of the IEPs and schedules does suggest that OT and PT providers may be doing their provision of service more on a medical model than an educational model. We brief what that means is, in public schools, we provide legal services to enable students to better access the learning, not because we're a clinic. It's an important distinction because if we offer more, if we provide more than the student actually needs, we're robbing instructional time, which is our primary mission. Not that these are bad people, but they may be coming out of a medical model. And we have some thoughts about that as well. Areas of opportunity aligned with what I was just saying. Revisit the idea of your program descriptions, further define them, develop and utilize those descriptions along with eligibility and exit guidelines for not only your instructional programs offerings on the continuum, but also the provision of related services, paraprofessional support and testing accommodations. It is very helpful for a lot of reasons in this approach, using these kinds of protocols. It's not, again, it's not rigid, but they're guidelines. We know you work with children, not with widgets. But in terms of ensuring active access, for example, and consistency of delivery, this is an important safeguard for everybody involved. Consider creating a scoping sequence of a quote-unquote "special education 101 monthly Central office considerations, again, an important area. We look at this in virtually every partnership that we are engaged in. The organizational structure, people usually ask this, are we, is it logical? Is it rational for our district, for our district? Yes, it is. But is it sufficient? There's nothing irrational about the way you're looking on the organization chart. When it's compared with our data bank, you are leanly staffed. And the reason that's important, you may look and say, gee, we're doing great work and we're leanly staffed, good for us, you know? That's been really efficient. We're good stewards of the tax dollar. That's a, a good misinterpretation, you will, because there are hidden costs. And the hidden costs accrue to your students. What happens in systems like this, and we see it a lot, is that you retain good people. You recruit and retain good, conscientious, bright, hardworking people. And they do their best, and what they're doing is invariably they'll be drawn to keeping the district in compliance with regulatory mandates and statutory mandates. Well, of course, nobody wants their district in trouble with state debt, for example. But that can become auto-consuming to the point that other leadership initiatives go banging. And those leadership initiatives tend to become visioning, program development, quality assurance, support, visibility, all of the things that take care of this program. Excellent. And like everything else, when we do it well, our students benefit. When we don't, everyone's who pay the price. So that's why we think this is important. Again, this is not to evaluate people. You've got good people. Current PPS caseload is approximately, an administrator for every 330 students. Our expected ratio is one for every 225 to 250 students. Rich could probably give me the percent difference there, but it's significant. There was a general agreement among those responding that professional development, looking backward, had declined, had deteriorated in the district, but has most recently taken a significant positive upturn. The trajectory is very positive and is very recognized and appreciated by the people we've met with. And it's been attributed to, to directors of curriculum and instruction and pupil services. Areas of opportunity, there are a number of different models, and you're going to hear more about this also from Rich because it impacts Medicaid as well. Ways to build capacity within the administrative component. It will allow, for example, a director of PPS to focus on more global enhancements, get out of the weeds a little bit, increase clerical staff support for day-to-day support to PPS functions, and then the fiscal implications, which Rich will talk about in just a few Very quickly, we did what we call an availability index for your staffing in those various positions, special ed teacher, paras, and the related services people. You were within expectations for a district of your size and wealth ratio for special ed teachers, for speech language, for psychologists and for behavioral health providers, which includes social worker psychologists and counselors. You were highly staffed or generously staffed in paras, OTs and PTs. Let me add this very quickly. This is data. It doesn't criticize and it doesn't celebrate. Bottom line question is, is it working for you? Is it working for your students? If you're lean and it's working great, good for you. Areas of opportunity, you may want to consider adding quantitative parameters for eligibility for paraprofessional support. You were pretty highly staffed by our database comparisons in paras staffing, and you may want to look very carefully at that in terms of that eligibility guideline thing that we were talking about. And you may want to consider negotiating OT and PT contracts, renegotiating to ensure that we're talking about an educational model of service delivery as opposed to a medical model and/or making these district positions. Response to intervention, in other words, the continuum of supports that transcends special education for all students. Respondents indicated the district has in place RTI processes facilitated by student support teams and tier interventions in literacy, numeracy and behavior at the elementary and middle school. Respondents expressed that resources were allocated at both of those levels, but not so much at the high school. It was widely reported that the state of the district ITI had been dramatically improved under the leadership of the new director of pupil services. From quantitative perspective, the data regarding RTI is mixed, although the district's overall student with disability population is lower than state and county averages. That's what, the reason we look so much at RTI or MTSS is because of its obvious implications for special ed. When RTI isn't up and running well, referrals to the CSE go up. When it is, a lot of those referrals are unnecessary. So while you still have, comparatively speaking, a relatively modest student with disability population, your increase across the last five years is significantly higher than both the state and county averages. So that is something, you know, it's like a little red flag saying, okay, what's going on here? What do we do to bring those referrals down and stop that trend toward more and more kids finding their way into being identified? Not that students who genuinely need it shouldn't be identified. Areas of opportunity, all teachers should understand the ownership standard of their jobs, not only with respect to owning all students, but that this RTI, response to intervention, is not a special education initiative. It is general education and should be owned by all teachers, okay? Develop RTI, an RTI plan that readily is accessible to staff across all content areas. Host those plans on the district website. Very healthy exercise to revisit the district plan. The continuum of supports for in-district special education programs, at the time of our visits, we were maintaining a continuum of services. I'm not going to read all of that to you. You know your programs. It's a nice continuum and we have some thoughts about continuing and enhancing that continuum. And by the way, many of the things that we're putting forth here as opportunities, your district has already been very proactive. You're already engaging in a lot of these things. It isn't like you're starting with a blank slate. You've got a lot of this stuff already in play. There is room for improvement in some of the goal, the goal writing, particularly in your IEPs around math and writing. This is a recommendation that is so often a part of our work. We think that IEP writing is not a one-and-done kind of professional development that it needs to be done annually. You have, as you just demonstrated tonight, attrition and turnover in your staffing. You have new people coming in. Anybody who's been in this business for a while knows that the state ed department changes the rules on IEPs periodically. It's a moving target. So either a refresher for your continuing people or an orientation for your new people on an annual basis is generally good practice. Key indicator, that is again, a cause for celebration, there are a lot of them in your district, your, your graduation rate for students with disability has been well above Erie County school districts as a whole, and, excuse me, and in line with the two analogous school districts that we looked at. That would be Orchard Park and Clarence, I believe. Areas of opportunity, continue to collaborate with staff in writing IEPs, as I was talking about. Continue to assess the integrated co-teaching model at all schools and ensure that the end is fully planned between the two departments and the master schedule supports the model. Continue and expand upon the excellent practices that promote the graduation rates that you're experiencing. You're a lighthouse district on that issue. Out-of-district placements, you are at 11.9% of your identified students, not parentally placed, but placed by the district in out-of-district special education programs. That is a very good number in our experience. We often find it to be 15% or more. So good for you. Areas of opportunity, continue to focus on the key variables, personnel, programs and physical plant space to do what we call a bring-back or keep-in program. Your, your staff indicated they bent every effort to not have to send students out of the district. That's to be applauded and we just, we urge you to continue that, that culture, continue those efforts, monitoring, always looking for ways to not have to send students out of the district. There's nothing wrong with the programs you're sending them to, but this is their district. Consider a dedicated transition specialist to support the needs of all students with disabilities, both within district and out of district, and those students who will be aging out and or graduating. I'm working with a district right now in Western New York that was just cited by the state ed department on this very issue. And now you can stop listening to me.
Thank you, John. I have roughly four minutes left. When we look at Medicaid, we look at your Medicaid revenue over a number of years. The reason being is that you can see from the chart that oftentimes your Medicaid revenue is received by the business office off-year from when the remittance was submitted. And so therefore, when we look, I'll look at a benchmark, we create a benchmark that's based on a three-year or a four-year average of, of revenue as our basis for comparison. And what we found is that utilizing your Medicaid eligibility rate of 21.66%, we estimated that the potential Medicaid revenue for all potential eligible students for all eligible services is about $243,000 and change per year. And I must say that that is in a, a perfect world where every student is receiving every service by a Medicaid-approved related service provider, and that's not always the case. And that's also assuming that the district has parental authorization from all of the parents of the Medicaid-eligible students, and in this district, that was not the case. The four-year average was approximately $176,000 and that was the number that we used for our benchmark. And if you remember, nothing else from my presentation on Medicaid is that the district is receiving this year almost $44,000 more than it did last year, which is a 31% increase over last year. And the, and the trajectory is very positive with regard to that. Again, we found that the district is not receiving reimbursement for all Medicaid-eligible students being provided to all Medicaid-eligible students for several reasons. We found that the annual cost settlement report has not been filed consistently each year, but on the other hand, once it is submitted, the state sometimes takes more than a year to approve it and to, and to pay it out. And we found that when we looked at remittances, it was primarily only billing for OT, PT and speech language. We found that all, not all parental authorizations are received from parents. And we found that there were federal funds from other federal grants that were being utilized for related services being provided to Medicaid-eligible students. You can't double dip. You can't pay someone from a federal grant and then seek federal reimbursement for them under Medicaid. Specifically for '22, '23, we found a large portion of your IDA grants may, perhaps being expended for Medicaid-eligible provider services. And we suggested in the report that where those services are being provided to Medicaid-eligible students, that the cost of that be moved from the IDA grant to your general fund to make it Medicaid-eligible. We found that MAG, who's your billing provider, was, should bill monthly for all Medicaid-eligible services, for all Medicaid-eligible students. And the district should require the timely submission of all required supporting documentation from all of your service providers. We found that some of the service providers, because of their contract, were required by contract to provide the level of data that's needed to support Medicaid billing. And, and even when they were required, it was not always timely for Aaron to be able to provide or submit the, the remittances. Based on our, our experience and, and the size and demographics of the districts, we did find that the PPS office is slightly understaffed by our estimation of a .FTE staff person. And one of the reasons that that became important to us to look at is that you do not have a dedicated person for Medicaid. That person wears a number of hats, has a number of responsibilities, and consequently... That person wears a number of hats, has a number of responsibilities, and consequently, Medicaid was not always the priority in terms of, of the workload. Our recommendation is that management may wish to consider eliminating the TOSA position, which is where the Medicaid responsibility currently lies, and in lieu of the TOSA, realign the current staffing and create either a deputy director or Medicaid coordinator position and add a .5 staff assistant position. Again, you may wish to consider creating what we call a deputy director and to integrate Medicaid into that position. In addition, another part-time special ed staff person should be cross-trained. In the event that that person is absent or without for a period of time, you want the Medicaid billing to continue, so you should have a cross-trained person, probably in special ed, to do that. Again, ensure that the annual cost settlement report is filed annually, and that with regard to parental authorizations, we suggest that the Medicaid eligibility determination should be integrated into the special education intake process. All students should be presumed as being Medicaid-eligible at the time that they're coming into the program, and that way there, you're not trying to track down parents after the fact to try to get them to file the parental authorization form. With regard to transportation, one of the things we look at is one of the benchmarks that, one is an industry standard, but it's also what your Department of Education looks at with regard to transportation, and that is that if your transportation budget is less than 5% of your district budget, then you're considered to be relatively cost-effective, which means you're not going to get a red flag by the Department of Ed. They're not going to come looking to see why your expenditures are extraordinarily high. So we felt we were very pleased to see that it was less than 5%. One of the commendations is that your management should be commended for having negotiated a highly favorable school bus contract. Because it was indexed to CPI each year, the result was highly favorable contract rate. The average cost per day per bus increased a very modest 2.73% over six years. To give you a comparison, I opened a bid two days ago for a school district, and their cost increase was 12% the first year, and seven, seven, five, and five. And one of the reasons that these costs are going skyrocketing in transportation is the result of the severe driver shortage, national driver shortage. In order to be competitive, contractors, employers have to be cost-competitive with the private sector, more so than their area of school districts. That's not where the competition is anymore for drivers. The competition is with the private sector. And coming up this morning, I followed a truck which was advertising $1,000 sign-on bonuses for CDL drivers. And as it said, that's their, that's your competition. Specialized transportation. You're transporting about 112 students, 31 placements, and one of the issues we had was in terms of being able to get the data we needed to do the analysis, that the contractor does not routinely utilize computer routing software for your special ed routes. We told the contractor that we're going to know that he was going to pass it on to his, his employer or his management, because he agrees that he should have a computerized routing system for both regular transportation and for special ed transportation. It makes his contract management and management of his drivers and his operation much easier if he has the benchmark basis and a routing system to do that. Your current, the contractor's currently using nine mini buses and a van with a rider, average ridership 11.2 students per bus van, and it's our opinion that the special ed routes are relatively efficient. Any change to that to increase that ridership would come at a cost of longer routes and more time on buses for students, most of which would not be supported by parents. One of the things that we, we found when we were here with regard to the regular transportation side, and, you know, we, we would feel remiss if we didn't report it to you, is that we found that several athletic trips were scheduled before the end of the elementary school day, and with the shortage of drivers, that the contractor not having sufficient drivers for the athletic trip requirements for later in the day. And our recommendation is that when sufficient drivers are not available for the elementary afternoon runs, that the athletic trips should be postponed until after the elementary runs are done. It's our opinion that the, the inconvenience to elementary students outweighs the athletic schedule. Not being an athletic director.
Never mind.
Our conclusion was that our review did not indicate any current or recent transportation performance issues, other than the ongoing shortage of bus drivers and bus monitors. Again, which is not only regional, but it's a national, national issue. Therefore, both your district regular and specialized transportation operation are both cost-effective and as efficient as possible, given the current average route lengths, and you'll see about six or seven pages in the report that could, that gives you all the data with regard to what your routes look like in terms of time and, and mileage, et cetera, that any increase in ridership efficiency would come at a cost of longer routes and greater student time on vans and buses, neither of which, in our experience, is acceptable to parents. I would add one other thing, is that I do want to thank both Joanne and Cindy for bearing with us, because we can be awfully demanding when it comes to data. And I have to say that they were both highly cooperative in being able to address the questions, provide us the reports that we, we requested, and taking the time to explain to us why things are done the way they are, because oftentimes, there's valid reasons why people are doing things the way they are, as opposed to just looking at quantitative data to, to make an assessment. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just had one question. I don't have the report in front of me, but when I was reviewing it, I noticed that you had pointed out that in the high school buses, you usually recommend maybe two students per seat as opposed to the three, and as we struggle with this bus driver shortage, I'm wondering, what are other districts doing? Are they continuing with three per seat? Because it just seems like that would make more sense to have the three, even if it's a short bus ride. I mean, there, I think it was 36 minutes was the longest bus ride, so I'm wondering if we should continue to try and do that as opposed to reducing it to two.
Here's the national, the industry standard. School bus seats per student are 13 inches wide. When you have high school and middle-aged, upper-middle-aged, middle-school students, their butts are wider than 13 inches. And when you have more than two students per seat, what happens is that the last student on the aisle side is, their feet are in the aisle because they're sitting sideways on the seat, which is illegal. And so for high school and middle-aged, middle-school students, we recommend two per seat. The other is that when you have three per seat, or try to get three per seat, your student athletes are, and your large students are going to require a seat to themselves. There's going to be behavior problems on the bus, because not every student is going to allow other students to sit with them. And so it's only really at the elementary level with the 13-inch seats where you can get three students per seat. The other is when we look at the, what that means is for a seven-passenger bus, your high school maximum number is about 47 students. Now, that's not to say that in some seats, you couldn't squeeze in an extra child or two. We all know that at the high school level, a lot of students don't ride the bus every day, so there are empty seats. One of the things we recommend when we talk to your contractor is that oftentimes, you can get away with overscheduling high school routes, knowing that there are a number of students who don't, who don't ride. So you can actually overschedule a high school route by about 110%, knowing that there'll be a number of those students on any day that, that won't ride. The caveat to that is that oftentimes, the students who actually ride in the fall are not the same students who ride in the spring because of after-school activities and sports in particular. I hope that answers your question.
Other questions?
No, just a couple comments. The transportation, both parts were very interesting. On the, the one thing you mentioned about the getting the software for the special ed routes, but then you finished it up saying it looks highly efficient the way we're doing it. So I just thought that was a little contradictory. And there was also a comment about the number of pickup points. I thought some of the runs you commented that we had maybe too many pickup points. We had, it was still within the time allowed by policy to get the buses out of MAG and stuff, so. And then the other part, your, your presentation, there was a lot of, look, when we sell our budgets, we talk about the per pupil expenditures, and we're one of the lowest in the area to per pupil, yet we're a high-performing district graduation. It seems like the special ed finance is kind of foul that same way. I know we've got a lot of opportunities to improve our department, but the end game is graduation, and that certainly is good news as far as I'm concerned. And I just wanted to make that comment. We agree.
Yes, Mr. Rensson.
Thank you. Just a quick one. You mentioned the fact that sometimes our occupational therapy and physical therapy people extend their, their therapy longer than may be needed in an educational setting as opposed to a medical setting. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, it could be frequency, duration, combination.
Well, it seems to me every time I've read an individual education plan, it has prescribed how much time is, is to be devoted to occupational therapy and physical therapy for that particular student per week. Are you saying they exceed the amount of time that it, that it's on the IEP?
Well, I'm not the person who reviews the IEPs. The person who does is saying essentially that, that for an educational model, they may be over-served. And, and again, you know, parents very often come to the table thinking more is better, not realizing that if we give that service beyond what's absolutely necessary for the child to be educated, we're, we're robbing time for teaching and learning. And, and so that's, that's why, you know, we go back to the idea of engaging the therapists themselves in the creation of guidelines in an educational milieu as opposed to a clinical milieu.
That's the part that caught my attention. It's, obviously, we want to make sure that children get as much time as possible in learning to read, learning all the other aspects of education. And so, and I know for a fact that when you're providing a service, any individual is providing a service, that when they're providing that service, they think it's the most important service imaginable, because they're providing it. And, and they, so, so the, and it doesn't matter what service, I'm not picking on OTPT people, you know, they, they, but for, for a classroom teacher, the bell rings. You know, if you're at a high school, the bell rings, you're done. I can't do any more for this particular child because the bell rang. And off they go. So, so I guess what I'm wondering is, where is it going wrong? Is it going wrong in writing the IEP? Or is it going wrong in not enforcing what it says on the IEP with, for the amount of time devoted to that particular therapy?
But once, once it's committed to the IEP, that's, that's essentially a contractual commitment of delivery. So that's, that's where you want to get out in front of that and be sure that those recommendations are truly from an educational mindset.
Gotcha. So it's, so you're saying that the IEPs may be excessive in those.
That's exactly where that came from.
Oh, I needed to know.
Yes, sir. You bet.
Mary Natchey, is that going to be your follow-up?
Um, yeah, I was going to say, it's not that, say, IEP says 30 minutes of PT a day. It's not that they're providing 45. I think, because John was saying, it's more that upfront.
Maybe they only needed 50.
Yes.
Got it.
And, or it is also, when you say educational versus clinical, you may have slightly different goals, and so the, the clinical may be the overall, like, how can I help with this particular prob, how can the OTPT help with this particular area of improvement overall in the child versus how can I help them succeed in this area of school today or tomorrow or whatever? And that's slightly different when you separate them out. And I, and so it doesn't necessarily even come into time always, it's just, how do I achieve these educational goals very specifically versus overall goals?
Do they talk to each other? I mean, do the, do the OTPT people talk to the classroom teachers and vice versa?
Yes, so that's part of the CSE meeting, the, and OT and PT and speech, and all of the people that are involved with that child's education, even the parents, are part of that meeting. So yes, they do talk.
And again, this is not to malign any of your practitioners. We worked with a district in Central New York where they were contracting out for these exact same services, and the local provider with whom they were contracting was a general hospital in the town. So these people were coming directly out of a hospital environment, and with all due respect to them, they needed to be reeducated that this is a different mission. We're, we're not a hospital, we're a school, and so we, it's a much different approach.
So they're still needed, that's not the point.
Exactly.
It's kind of like thinking, okay, so how much therapy do they need to access the curriculum effectively as opposed to correcting and eliminating the problem? So, like, so, so you may do that in, in your therapy, but you may just improve their skills to a point where they're able to access, but the, it isn't fixed or gone away. A medical model may have a more intensive approach, so that they, they want to correct, you go to a physical therapist because you hold your calf muscle. Their, their purpose is to make it, and make it better. So, but through an educational model, it's like, what do they need to just access successfully so they can be like, as John was saying, in the classroom for, for, for direct instruction as much as they possibly can?
So are those folks our employees, or are they coming from a hospital somewhere?
Some now, we just hired our occupational therapist, and we're going to be hiring the occupational, COTAs, their, their assistants.
I saw that.
Be on staff. We've been, we've been contracting out for, gosh, decades.
So that should help.
That should help, yeah.
Did you do that because, based on the recommendation, or you do that just because you?
Well, I think a lot of the recommendations come from families and things like that, right? And some best practices. So I think that was something that, when I started, it was something that I was hearing from, you know, the staff that was here. So it just happened that it was part of the recommendation also, so it, you know, just affirmed what we thought, and so we moved forward.
That's when there's alignment of thought. Isn't that wonderful?
It's nice to be affirmed.
So you did say that there's been a positive improvement in the number of SWD students in the general education classes?
Yes.
Up to 55%. So what should be the goal? It's 100%. What is the goal that?
Well, 100% sounds lovely. The state issues a target for you.
Yes, so the state issues a target. So if you remember my special ed report back in November, I think it was, and we talked about that, we, Erin and I moved it apart with the least restrictive environment, I believe the state target right now is 65%.
Yes.
So, definitely making positive.
It's dramatic progress.
I think from the things we've done the past year with our, you know, full inclusion classes and, you know, bringing classes back, I think we've even improved beyond that, but state ed data takes a little bit longer.
Mrs. Mary Natchey, do you have anything else you want to add based on?
No, unless there's any questions, but I, I really enjoyed working with the gentleman, and I think that a lot of the things that they talked about, we've had the benefit of working with them all year. They started this process in September, so I think, like, the positive or the increase that you're seeing in our Medicaid billing already this year are some of the things that we've talked about, that they've brought to our attention, and we've already started implementing. So I, we had the benefit of being able to start already to make some of the changes and suggestions and findings, so.
I could just offer an observation. In our work, we work only for school superintendents. We, they're the CEOs of your organization, they're the ones we work for. The leadership team in your district is of an ilk that says, "Come in, look at everything. Tell us how we're doing. Tell us where we're doing well. Tell us where we can do better." I would suggest that that is the kind of leadership that evidences child-centered courage. That's, that's a commitment to continuous improvement on behalf of your students. I think that's what we need, don't you?
Absolutely.
So my compliments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your report was, it was, it was great to read, to see things that we're doing right and the things that we have to improve by, and it was so incredibly thorough. I'm very impressed you actually interviewed 51 people, because I think that's such an important part of any.
We agree.
Evaluation, any analysis.
Yeah. I could tell you. I could tell you some stories about that. But it is, it's incredibly important to our work.
And one of the things that I, I thought was so interesting, when you were talking about transportation, the bus drivers, the fact that Walmart is paying $110,000.
Right.
To drive.
That's why every school district in New York State has signs out, bus drivers.
Just mind about it when I saw that in your report.
Wal- Walmart?
Walmart.
Well, showed you moving boxes is more important than moving children.
Actually, this past year, Prime and FedEx targeted recruiting school bus drivers because they know they're good drivers, they know they're drug and alcohol free and that they can follow directions.
As long as they don't follow up.
They're good with boxes.
I live in Lancaster and we just received a notice, maybe two weeks ago, Kristi does too, that they've gone from 90 something drivers to 60 something drivers and they just had to readjust school start times for next year. And they're giving all the parents a, a long time to wrap that information. Like, yeah.
That, by the way, is a, is a pretty common practice where school districts have suffered driver, severe driver shortages. It's resulted in creating an additional tier of recalcitation and adjusting, most, most of the time it's adjusting the elementary start times or splitting the difference between the high school and the middle school start times. It can be done a couple of different ways. We do, we do a number of those types of reconfiguration studies for school districts. It's, it's not popular.
Imagine that. Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
I just, I would just like to thank you as well. I think the, the process has worked really well. It's very thorough. And I appreciate all the admin's work. Cindy, you started talking about this, we talked about kind of doing a special, you know, as we've gone over like the last five to seven years, we've seen dramatic changes in, in, in that area. And so Cindy brought it to my attention, we talked about it. And, and I, you know, and, you know, I said, I think it's a good idea because it's going to give us some, some like food for thought. I think there's a lot of things that are going well. We have a really, really talented staff and a really dedicated staff. They're providing great services for students. But I think, of course, for us, it's graduation rates are really important, you know what I mean? So are there things we can fix along the way? Yes, but, you know, our graduation rates for students with special needs are near the top. And so those are all really important factors. But I think it was really thorough. I appreciate everybody's encouragement for the people who were interviewed because sometimes going through this process is a little uneasy, right? You don't know what to expect. And so I'm glad that we were able to get 51 interviewees to step up and share because that's what makes the, the actual report valid, you know? Because, you know, we're taking in a lot of information. And so again, Cindy joined too with transportation, all the numbers and all that good stuff. But all the principals and, and other directors too that, like I said, encouraged people to participate. Thank you. Or all the time and after you put it, it was a ton of time.
Thank you.
I would, I would just offer that after you've had a chance to read the reports and digest it, if you have questions, feel, feel free to reach out.
Absolutely.
I happen to be in the area for the next six weeks, two other school districts in this area, so I could be reached relatively easily.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. On your way out. We're moving back to business.
Yep.
Before I dive into the April financials, I wanted to thank the board for supporting my continued education with my professional development. I just came back from Saratoga, our annual conference from ASBO. And one of the speakers on Rajish is an economist. And I went to that class. I am not an economist, so I won't be able to explain everything. But one of the things that stuck out to me, I'm going to have Cindy hand these two out from either end, I only brought in two copies, that I felt I would be remiss if I didn't share with the board. The yellow, or the red circles have to do with a yield, a trending yield that are indicators of historical recessions. And that's what stuck out in my head, that we are trending towards a recession. And with that said, he was concerned for school districts and municipalities with a financial cliff coming, with the loss, the end of the stimulus funding and foundation aid being fully implemented. So it's just for informational purposes that I think that it's something that we should be, have in our mind and be considering for long range planning. He couldn't say when it would hit. He couldn't say how long it would last for. He just said that this is very indicative historically of a recession coming. And my other piece of information, it's just coming from two separate sources. We also received a report from Capital Markets that indicates, I highlight, highlighted it in yellow so you don't have to read the whole thing right now, that there's an increased indication that a recession will be coming. So I just thought I would be remiss in my duties if I didn't inform the board of that. Rajish's actual quote was, save every penny you have right now. And I'm just sharing information from the economist. And I have these full reports if anybody wanted them. And Rajish's phone number is on there, which he could explain it way better than I could. He was very excited and very engaging, but way smarter than I am when it comes to this. But in a different way. So our financials this month are from April. The general fund had $11.5 million in cash in the bank, which ties to our cash flow. I still feel confident that we will be okay with our cash flow through the summer months. As of the end of August, we had spent 73% of our appropriated budget, our appropriations expenditure side. I'm tracking this on a daily basis right now and we are tracking to spend 99% of our appropriated expenditure side of our budget. I'm watching that very closely. Second year in a row, which is another thing that we should be concerned about moving forward long range planning with developing our budgets. Our revenues as of the end of April, we had received 92%. And as we've been talking with the board grid throughout the year, our revenues are coming in very strong and we are trending, and the last time I looked, to be receiving approximately 105% of our revenue budget. Cafeteria Fund, Mr. Brunson, yes, our, our fund balance in the cafeteria. I love your ideas, but part of our child nutrition audit.
You have to save every penny.
Well, part of our child, under cafeteria fund, we can't do that. Under our child nutrition audit, which we're going through and just finishing up, we have to spend that fund balance down. And we've been working with the building principals and personal touch. And today, actually, my assistant just put in $260,000 worth of requisitions to spend this down as required by child nutrition law. And they're buying different equipment for each of the different buildings. I believe at Parkdale, they're getting a new line and a fresh market cart to help promote fresh fruits and vegetables and salad options at the Parkdale level. At the middle school, I think they're getting a new dishwasher and something else. There were two things at the middle school. Oh, pizza ovens. And at the high school, additional pizza ovens. And at all three buildings, they're looking at graphics to be put on the walls to help freshen up the cafeterias. And as of the end of April, revenues exceeded expenditures by about $43,000. And that's all I had for tonight and my questions.
economist, the 99% of the appropriations being spent this year, you know, is very alarming because we had a lot of money set aside that we weren't going to use. Money that we're transitioning out of the grant. So the 99%, we think we're under budget, but theoretically with our three-year plan, which I want more of explanation in a future meeting, that money basically was in reserve and that we weren't going to use it. So we've used not only what we budgeted, but those, that extra appropriation we had set aside to do, just to set, have funds left over so we can plan for the next couple of years.
Yes.
But this is a painful number.
It is a painful number. I agree. And there are certain areas, substitutes, both instructional and non-instructional, are.
Different codes.
Are extremely over budget. It's just an exception. Legal costs this year are over budget again. There are certain things that came in different, that ate into that money and it's, it's where it's going to land again. So.
Question, you said substitutes. So are we having teachers need substitutes because they are leaving for professional development for, where, where are those substitutes, what's the need coming from? Why are so many teachers out?
Yes.
Most of them.
Sickness. We still are seeing a lot of sickness, both family and personal. Yes. Some is professional development, not all of it, but I believe when I looked, I don't like quoting numbers in front of, off the record, please, Sean.
You don't like to say.
I don't like quoting numbers in front of the press. But yes, you could, you are more than welcome to come and, and see. We are over budget significantly in certain areas that ate up what you're talking about.
Yeah, because theoretically, if it wasn't, if we weren't in the years of the COVID relief grant, let's just say it didn't exist, we'd be looking at a budget that'd be overspent.
Could, we could.
Anyway, it worked out, the numbers are working out, but it certainly put together all the plans we want until, like Ty said, until you hit the face, you know? And then it's, it's in the face. And the other kind I had is we have a resolution coming up about the health and welfare for Buffalo. That's a big number.
It is a big number. And it just came in from, it came in, I think, a week ago together.
$100 or something, I mean, it's, it's under resolution.
I have to find it. Yes, and I believe we have, that's Buffalo Public?
Yeah, like 40 some students, 1100 a pop.
Yep, going to the private schools, right? Health and welfare.
That's, that's surprising to me, but anyway, thank you for your good work. Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
In the time you spent with audits, you know, looking at position, sometimes you're managing audits more than.
I have four going on currently. I have four in my office right now. My assistant is pulling her hair out. External, internal, child nutrition and state audit. And it's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and bringing those points up, Mr. Brunson.
Brian, could we put on the agenda at a future meeting the possibility of having a report on the substitutes? Like, I'd like to know, are the substitutes due to sickness or they, is it due to professional development during the day where we need to have, we're paying for subs for, so the teachers can learn? And we have a long-term sub in each building. That is such a huge number, as you're saying, I think that's something we need to be having a discussion about. Thank you.
It sounds to me like we also need to rethink our plan for transitioning from the reliance on the federal money for COVID relief and folding those new positions that were created into the regular, the regular general fund budget. Because that whole plan was predicated upon having a substantial surplus from this year since we were taking a third of the grants each year over a period of three years and transferring it from the federal, federal fund to the general fund. And so if that third disappeared for this year because of over-expending other areas of the budget, it seems to me we need to take a step backward now and, and make a new plan for how we're going to do, not this, this budget that just passed, but the following year's budget. We will be no federal money. And when we had hoped to, by then, have the full impact of these new hires into the general fund.
Mm-hmm, yes. And just on a small, the 2223 this year that's coming to an end, we didn't budget a third. We budgeted 25%. We had changed that. But it's 25% of like $400,000. So it's like $100,000.
Yeah, and it's, yeah. Well, and some of it is made up by the additional revenue that we're receiving as opposed that was unexpected. So there'll still be a fund balance at the end of the year. But I think we need to track that pretty closely and we need to think more about the next two years out. What I don't want to do is lay off some of these people we hired tonight, you know? And it's just as simple as that.
But you really can't substitute, I understand your point, but substituting the positions that we have budgeted in there for the expenditures that are coming through the 2250 accounts or, or the, or the, we almost like Washington substituting, well, there are two different, two different problems we have to address is budgeting for those higher expenditures that are going to be carried over in '23, '24 and weaning off the relief grants. So what you do is you're kind of paying a penalty for expenses in other areas by maybe not bringing some of those staff over. It's just, what you're trying to do is balance the expenditures, which I understand, it's going to come from somewhere, which is personnel, which I agree with. But the problem isn't as much our plan to transition off the grants as it is to pay these expenses in those other areas. There are certain differences.
Yes.
But the bottom line is, yes.
It's a little somewhere, you know?
I know what your point is. Well, I just wanted to clarify that there's different things here we got to take a look at when we start putting the next budget together, which would be in the 2250 codes. I know we can't say anything more than that, but, I mean, it's real.
Well, and, and maybe it implies that there are some actions that this board needs to take in the coming months with regard to further expenditures, you know? Because, I mean, there is not a meeting where we don't create new jobs. Bada bing bada boom. Well, tonight, the recommendation was add administrators, right?
Yep.
It's student driven.
I'm not saying it is or isn't. I'm just saying that, that it's something that we need to plan for. And that, and that when we expand 99% of our appropriations, we close the plan and up.
And it's hard to hear him saying we need more administrators when the public says we have too many administrators.
Well, there you go. Well, and he says we have too many paraprofessionals.
Right.
But I didn't want to get into that with him because I, I think that's some of the best spent money we have, but what are you going to?
Part of it is, is just the design of the program. So it's just, a lot of it is just working, one day working through the process of the CSE. How do they do things differently? People deliver a service to an occupational therapist, not like, again, calling it out. But that's what they were saying is that, how is that service delivered? Can it be done in a more efficient way and still be as effective? And that's the same thing with the paraprofessional. How are they assigned? What roles and responsibilities do they have? And how can you finesse that to, to kind of pare it down but still be as effective? So there's some techniques to do that. And so it's just more of a conversation at that table.
Can I suggest that now that, now that the report exists and the board has it and can digest it, we have updates as you and the administrators get to digest it on how you're incorporating the guidance or not incorporating the guidance based on our practices? And when we put it on for our future agenda to talk.
Like, we've already started doing some things like hiring the occupational therapy to be announced.
And we may have to get back to the point where when someone leaves, we have to ask ourselves the question, do we have to replace them? Because we have paraprofessionals leaving all the time.
I'm going to keep us moving along because we have.
Thank you, good idea.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to follow up. Thank you. We're moving on to item.
The committee assignment, the goal for tonight was not to select which committees were on. We do that at the reorg meeting. But we did want to talk about, what did we want to talk about? We were, we had started the conversation about pairing down the number of committee responsibilities. So the idea for this evening was to review the committees and have, I'd suggest a brief conversation about how we might want to pare those down if possible.
Fewer committees or fewer people?
Fewer people on the committees potentially. We can review the committees to make sure we have the committees we want to have. We've had others come up that we may want to consider adding at the district level. We can choose that. I don't want to say that folks should not get to participate in committees they feel are important, not to exclude board members, but to say, hey, folks, we can lighten up and make this a reasonable thing for people to do. We aren't the only seven committee members, community members who can do this job and other people. and other people out in the world might think we're bonkers because of the amount of time we spend doing this. It does not have to suck up every spare minute, we have seven reasonable people on this board. One person could serve on many of those committee, committees instead of two or three. That is just a proposal, again, I'm not trying to exclude anyone, but I'm trying to give you all, give all of us a free pass to not do every single thing. How's that? All right. That being said, how would you like to proceed? We have the committee list, if you can share over there, Mr. Brunson and Mrs. Daniel, if you don't have it in front of you.
I think at the last meeting, we discussed this, we talked about reducing the committee numbers, and we were going to estimate the times in the month by committee at tonight's meeting.
That seems like too much work.
Wait, pardon Terry, I'm sorry, was that last meeting? Pardon me, Terry, I missed what you said.
The last meeting, we talked about reducing the number of committees that we four members on. And what we said we were going to do at the next meetings, which is tonight, estimate the times in the month by committee, like budget policy, how many times do you meet per month? That type of thing, just to give an idea of.
And I said at the last meeting.
No, that was a, that was a short meeting, that was a good idea.
Maybe that's a goal for us in this upcoming year, right?
I think that's a great idea, too, to set aside more spending on each of those committees.
Because the comment was made that it's not going to be consistent, right? So the past two years with the policy committee, it has been, it has been. I foresee that leveling out to more norm, but in other committees, there may be a spike.
Cap facilities.
But, but to maybe make that part of the process, this, you know, during the spring, you know, we come back together and we say, this is what the time spent was for these committees, so that as we are getting to the committee assignments, people have some understanding of what they're stepping into, especially the folks who are new.
Yep.
And understand that. I agree, that was a short meeting and an ambitious thing to come up with. And I think that just maybe looking at what committees we could reduce the number of us on.
Okay, so why don't we review the list, does that make sense?
My, my only comment on that, though, is instead of potentially reducing, maybe doing an alternate? Because I do think that it's a nice to have at least, you know, for example, I couldn't make it to one of the safety committee meetings this past week, but I knew that Dan and Terry were going to be there.
Yep.
So I didn't feel terrible because I knew they were more than capable of, you know, if I had a comment, they could relay it and then they would be there.
I would, I would suggest we say the minimum number of board members required for a committee or that we think is reasonable, we know the policy committee needs more board members because that is the board's job, right? We should have three so that we don't have a quorum, but we're not one person deciding all the policies. But I think we could say the minimum we think are necessary and knowing that we can have up to three.
Okay.
So how about a minimum plus an alternative if we feel the need? And we'll just run through them quickly, and then we can talk briefly about what other committees we feel may be missing or how we might want to adjust what they are. I would start with the policy committee and say I think three board members is appropriate, does anyone disagree? Budget and finance committee.
Three.
Three.
Three, okay. Audit committee. Beth, are you good with catching the numbers? Because I'm, great, thank you.
There's just the two board members on that.
No, I mean, one, one could do it, but two's okay.
So let's say one to two? Or one, one, a minimum of one plus an alternate?
You have to have three people on that committee by law, but we have two community members. So one board member makes the third, and a second board member is a good idea because sometimes people are absent.
Well, I think so, I think.
Can I suggest we add a column to this to say the, perfect, thank you? So Dan's point that we are required to have three people on the audit committee at a minimum? Curriculum and textbook?
We don't need to have three.
I would say two.
One plus an alternate or?
I would say two.
I would say definitely two with an alternate, I feel like this could be the type of area to that.
Actually, you're right.
Yes, yes.
And it's worked out with us, though, being on this, because there's different areas of interest, there are areas that people have asked different kinds of questions that were taken the lead on, I'll read this book versus, I'll see, you know, like, I think, I think three is good.
Especially now that it's, it's clearly the curriculum and textbook committee and not just the textbook committee.
Right.
When it was, you're reviewing the textbook, one board member read the textbook was probably enough. But, but now that you did the UPK curriculum, you weren't just looking at a textbook, you were talking about the curriculum. So as, as the administration gets used to talking about curriculum in this committee as opposed to just bringing a textbook for review, then I think more board members' involvement is essential.
So we're in agreement to stick with three? Facilities?
You need three on that.
I would say three, yeah.
You need three on that. This year should be really busy, though.
Spend twenty minutes of our lives doing this, I'd get absolutely. Two and an alternate, I, having served on the, on the facilities committee, I think there's interest. I think that stakeholders across the district are absolutely essential. I would suggest we probably don't need three board members. I think if three board members would like to be there, I think they're welcome, it could probably be two.
Okay. Sure.
All right.
That'll work out well for me.
All right, you are welcome, but not required. A visitation committee, I think that's the more the merrier, one plus an alternate, but, you know, everyone can show that's best. Athletic advisory.
I'm actually, I'm actually on this one.
Yep.
But I'm not, but I'm not written there, I was added.
You were added, added.
So we have three, how many do we need?
And I don't think it's a three board number committee.
Is that a one plus an alternate? I feel, so we're in school committees now.
I feel like it's a two plus an alternate, I, I feel like. Yeah, I think there are different things that come up, yeah.
So there's, the idea of the school district committees, we're trying to channel other districts here, is to report.
Report back.
Somebody is the liaison between the district work and the board, this is not the board's committee. The former representative on that one?
Yeah, so you could do that, I mean, we could do one, I guess, and have an alternate.
Three are welcome, but, well, that's up to the superintendent, their committee.
And that's it, we're trying to identify what's the minimum so that we're not placing an expectation amongst the board members that you have to do all these things. So if we say one plus an alternate is our minimum?
Yep.
But three people want to be going to all meetings? And they have this time and effort to do that, then.
If it's okay with the superintendent?
Right.
Okay, so if, okay, one plus alternate.
I think by doing, like, some of them, like, policy is, is like your thing, right? And budget, right? That's another piece, so you're two. But if you, if you put on the other, and you put one plus an alternate, that doesn't prohibit other committees. So if three want to be on it, then go ahead and do it. But just, what that does is that it says we only need one.
Right.
But if you put three, then you're supposed to point three. You know, and so you can only have one, but you can have as many as, you can have as many as one, you can have up to three, you know? So if you put one plus an alternate, because you do want to have a backup in case you have to be absent. But then two others could attend if they want. If you have the time to do it and you're interested in it. But if you just put one, that's what you say, and this committee, we really only need one, because they're going to report out. And this, you know, you probably should have three, like, policy, because that is our thing. Same thing with facilities, might like, okay, this year we'll probably have two and an alternate because facilities is big this year, right? Because we're going, so that, that's, I think that's what it is, just gives you more flexibility in how you serve.
I agree.
Yeah, so it's, it's not that three people can't be on any committee that you want to be on because you have a particular interest. Start off with less, it then gives you more room.
So this would be something that we would have then, like, we would have to know when the other meetings are, because, for example, maybe the capital projects one is something that, that maybe, you know, we're not on that committee, but we're really interested because something's coming up, the community is asking questions, we want to be aware. So if we know when all those meetings are.
We'll want to assign people, we won't want it to be catch as catch cam.
Yep.
It, it won't be an open door thing, it'll be who's on the committee, who gets to go to the meetings, I think. That would be better for consistent.
Especially on the board committees.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying how you were saying, like, if that's what you are, like, say you're interested in that, but you're not on that committee, you're still welcome to go, is that, that's what you were saying?
Well, because there is a limit to three, that's the most you can have on any committee.
Right.
So, yeah, so you would want to sign up, but let's say it's up to all of them with the athletic advisory. So you have one, but then two other people say, I really need to be on it this year, then two other people get on. But you only need one.
Not.
Yeah, you have to report out.
Yeah, the one thing is that you have to coordinate then amongst those three people so that one person, because you can sign up and have three people, all three of you sign up, and then everyone, you only need one person going, then no one shows up because they think, oh.
No, if three people are on the committee, those are the people who are committed to doing the work.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but we need to make sure that, that if you're doing.
You don't sign up for a committee if you think you can go to one out of ten meetings.
Right.
What I'd like everyone to think about, the reason I feel this is important, and I don't know if you recall me talking about this after the NISBA vote, there, there was an issue about whether or not board members should receive stipends, right? And there was a feeling that, no, why would we, we're volunteers, it changes the whole, the whole idea of the work that we do. So I went into the six-hour meeting and I listened to all the arguments, and I had the brain pop. Oh, the reason that you want to offer stipends is to make it a possibility for any community member who may need childcare, who may need transportation, who may have another job that they're doing, right? It's to open it up so that other people can participate in the thing that we somehow can figure out how to do for free, right? This is the same thing, this is us, pardon me, getting over ourselves and opening this up to the entire community. At some point, we won't all be here. Who out there wants to do this job that takes so much time? How do we build this up for the next folks so they can come in and do this job and see how it could possibly tuck in to their very, very busy lives? So I am delighted by everyone's enthusiasm and wish to be in all the committees, but the point is to build forward. So you can sign up for all of the things, what I'd like to get to is what is the minimum that we need to do to participate fairly in the district and open this up for others in the community to take their turn?
To that point, though, we have never had a way for the community, we've never invited the community to come in and say, okay, do you want to be on our athletic advisory committee? I mean, we need to come up with a way that we can get more community members on these committees, if that's, if that's what your.
I'm saying that so they can take our jobs, these jobs. Oh, being on the board member. Being a board member is not.
Okay.
The only thing you can do with your entire life, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually had a parent approach me two weeks ago and ask me if we've ever considered paying the board members. No, he was very serious.
I did not plant that personally.
No, no, he was very serious.
A lot of people think we are paid.
Yeah.
They're flabbergasted when I tell them we're not paid, a lot of people.
And so I, I don't know the rule.
Not New York State.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city of Buffalo is, yeah, right.
Yeah, but the big, the big five are, everybody else is not, and that was the NISBA proposition, should it.
And I think his reasoning was, he's like, well, they put in a lot of time, right, you know, that they should be, you know? And so, yeah, I think that's, I think that's, I mean, thinking about this, like, in setting this up, it should be about providing some relief, but not prohibiting from participating. So it's, it's just a more flexible structure of signing up for, for the committees. So you, so you don't have to feel you have to have three members, and then, like, the third person, like, okay, I'll take that one, too. Right, you know, but you, if you really love a committee, then have three people on it.
We live in a country of volunteers, people, people love to volunteer, that's why we eat dinner so early, so that we can get to all of our meetings. And the Kiwanis Rotary Alliance Club, the Women's Club, all these groups are people who donate their time free of charge, don't expect to be paid, and as a matter of fact, spend a lot of their own money doing it, it's what makes America great.
Moving on, we have the community engagement committee, I think there can be conversation there at a future board meeting, I think there should be conversation there.
That one has to be rewritten, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, and it should be flipped, we should be doing things in reverse, instead of us viewing to, it should be more dialogue. So let's, let's sort of leave the number there because we don't even know what the committee is going to be.
I'm sorry, Jess, can we go back for the athletic advisory, what did we just sign on, one plus an alternate?
As a minimum.
One plus an alternate as the minimum. Just your parent council, is that one plus an alternate as a minimum?
I would say yes.
Okay. Health advisory, health curriculum advisory committee.
We, did we?
This is an as needed? We did, I think.
And it's curriculum, so I don't know if that means we should have two.
This is the one that was required.
Yeah.
So I think we're, there's a, you have to have someone from the clergy, you have to have someone from the athletic department, you have to have a parent, you have to have a board member, I'd say one plus an alternate unless otherwise required. Safety committee.
I'm, I would say three, or two plus an alternate, only because that's such a. It's huge, safety is huge.
I would say two plus an alternate.
Two plus an alternate.
And that for a lot.
Especially we're going through a pretty, we went through a substantial change, we're going to continue to, to make adjustments that are, will be probably fairly significant for the next year or so.
Yeah, on the building level, that is strictly district, building level emergency response teams. And sustainability?
I reached out to Jeff Shelley in the beginning of the year and asked him if he wanted board members on it like the past. I never got a response.
I haven't been invited to that committee since I volunteered to join.
I did it that one year.
Several years ago.
Yeah.
Maybe we leave it on the list and pull the board members for the time being, until we figure out what the involvement would be?
Well, it's a high school group, right?
Right.
Did they even know we're.
Yeah, that's a good.
I attended that one meeting when we were talking about the resolution.
That's when they first started it, remember?
It had to be three years ago.
Yeah.
Talk to them about whoever, leave that person, get them on.
And then, and then there can be feedbacks, I think it would be.
Then again, it's a one. It's a one.
One, one plus alternate, thank you. Did we have, Mr. Brunson, you had suggested looking at food security?
Well, if one of these committees is appropriate for, to talk about the kinds of things I wanted to talk about, about figuring out ways of making sure it's not hungry in the morning, there's lots of different options, but I, we can't talk about that here, we don't have time.
No, I was going to suggest, maybe Mr. Ess, you'd like to think about if there are other committee needs that might include that or the.
Which could be, of course, I see it as an ad hoc group, you know, it doesn't have to be an annual committee. It could be something you put together for a couple of meetings to come up with the right way of making sure kids can grab an apple on the.
Maybe it would make space for an ad hoc committee and.
Yep.
With a board member and an alternate, okay, thank you. ECA SB, I think those are the standard, I don't think there's any, any getting out of those. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on the numbers there? I think it's one or an alternate. Thank you, other questions or thoughts? So the, at the reorg meeting next month, we will make our selections. Thank you for your input, thank you for listening to my spiel, I appreciate that.
Reorg.
Moving on to item D, our board goals. Thank you all for completing your responses. We had started, fair enough, throw things around.
Is this something that we have to decide tonight, or could we do this?
Honestly, let us on for when everyone's more alert.
Yes.
Did I share out the, okay, my apologies, we'll do that. Okay, I will share our draft. Thank you. Yes. Please remember it is in draft form. Item E, capital facilities.
Yeah, we really, we did a little bit of work with the group for the high school, high school outdoor facilities, but I think we haven't had a meeting, we're having a meeting next week, so we'll probably, what, Tuesday, yeah, so Tuesday, so we'll have an actual, like, a full report, some of the students.
Great, thank you.
Nothing critical right now.
So Brian, so that, there's the meeting in the first, and there's a second meeting at eleven with the stakeholders discussing the.
Library.
Library, is that, capital facilities members? Library, is that scheduled with the capital facilities members, or is that?
Uh, sure, if you want to attend, yes.
Yeah, we, we all received an invitation, yeah.
Wanted to, definitely be involved in this.
Yes, yeah.
Well, did, did you, did you receive an invitation?
For next week's?
Yeah.
I guess the time got changed.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, it's for the second part.
Yes, it was, it was listed because Steve asked to reserve the room.
Yeah, great, great.
All right, moving on to item 13, the consensus items, is there anyone who wishes to remove an item from the consensus, touch on it?
Yes, please, I would like to suggest that we, that we remove item B under other, declare books as surplus and obsolete.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I have a motion to approve the remaining consensus items. By Mrs. Oiler, second, and by Mrs. Daniel, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item 14, item requiring board action, item A, superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a second reading to adopt the policies collectively known as EA 7000 as detailed in your agenda. By Mr. Cassidy, second, second by Mrs. Daniel, discussion, felt a gratitude to the missing Mr. Mambradi, committee, thank you very much, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item B, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a second reading to retire the policies collectively known as section 8000 of the current policy manual, I have a motion, moved by Mrs. Daniel, Cassidy, discussion.
Are we on item C or B?
B.
B, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item C, Mr. Brunson, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a first reading to adopt the policies collectively known as EA 8000 as detailed in your agenda, may I have a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Brunson, seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion.
Yes, I, I would like to ask, I have no problem with voting on this tonight, but I would like to ask, before we do the second reading, to act as the official policy of the district, we'd like to ask the policy committee to take a, a second look at 8050.06 and 8090.02, just to, in the first one is to, my concern is that, did the language be appropriate for ensuring accessibility to the single use, single occupancy bathrooms for, for any person who would use it, and I'd just like to be sure that we're clear that the language means that, and under 8090.02, I'd like to ask the policy committee to take a look at that with regard to, with regard to issues relating to making it more or less difficult for children to, to access food, and to see if there's some adjustment could be made to, to ensure that as many students as possible have access to breakfast and lunch programs.
Thank you for your feedback, Mr. Brunson, any other comments?
And we've removed-
8010.01, yeah, that was, that was removed in our agenda changes.
Okay, so this would approve everything except 8010.01 for first read?
Right. All right, thank you very much, we will, the policy committee will meet, I'm sure, before we get to the second reading, and we'll actually address those two policies and clarify if necessary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item D, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a first reading to retire the policies collectively known as section 5000 as detailed in your agenda, minus 5110, which has been removed, moved by Mrs. Daniel, seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item E, superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve a sports merger with the Holland Central School District for the 2023 fall season of football, wrestling, swimming, indoor track, boys' volleyball, field hockey, and cheerleading, may I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Oiler, second, seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion, I would just like to say, it is so cool to see that list growing, I've, you know, many of us were here when we were just trying out one, how can we do this thing of collaborating with Holland, so that's really great to see more and more work to keep both teams in the sports, school districts in the sports, Mr. Cassidy?
Yeah, so what ones are, so speaking of growing, what ones are new, is swimming a new partnership?
Swimming is new.
Swimming is new, or any other, of the other ones new?
No, the other ones were, like, could be added a little bit, but swim, swimming's a new one this year.
We have to prove them that we are-
There's newer ones, they're like, you know, so like, football goes back 10 years, and then-
Right.
Then there was wrestling and indoor track, and I think hockey, boys' volleyball was just recent.
Yeah, some, some of this is not, because a lot of this is us helping them.
Yes.
Us helping them?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, and that's-
We can example that.
Right, and, and that's, that's through your conversations with their, their AD and, and, okay.
Right.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Wait, oh, yeah. Oh, I just, this, we're doing discussion, right?
Yeah.
I just want to confirm, our attorneys have reviewed this?
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item F, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the amendment to the professional services agreement between young and right, young and bright architectural and the school district as detailed in your agenda, have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Oiler, second, seconded by Mrs. Daniel, discussion.
Again, approved by our attorneys, reviewed and approved by our attorneys, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item G, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement between university or community and the school district, athletic training services as detailed in your agenda. Moved by Mr. Cassidy, second, Oiler, second.
Was this before a grant that, or? It was, okay, so this is the first time we are actually paying?
Yeah, so, go ahead, right.
So what it was is, there's been a substantial raise that we're paying, because there was a grant that was offsetting some of our costs, run by ECMC, that was us at about, at each other schools when, I was talking to UVMD, but ECMC pulled the grant, or doesn't have it, whatever it is, so he had to, he was given that money, divided up amongst all of his member schools, give all of them a break, but then obviously without that grant, now we're all responsible for that.
And they've also had, like, a-
And they've had rising costs as well, so there was a few items-
Yeah, double hit.
Will still be trainer Tim?
He'll be trainer Tim.
Money is in the-
Those will be our-
Are you Tim making a personal decision, the UVMD and us would both like it to be trainer Tim.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Reviewed by our attorney, this contract.
By our attorney.
I, I'm thinking that it's been reviewed, because it's the same contract, but it's-
No, but I, I don't know for this particular year.
I, I would, yeah, that's a great question, I don't know about that.
Can we have a, can we approve pending review? We need a review?
Actually, this is 2223 up here.
This is a lot of contracts.
Mm-hmm, it's medical treatment, you know, it's treatment.
I don't know that, so, I could have, or we could just table it, put it on for July, find, will that cause you trouble?
Will that be a problem?
I believe so, he doesn't, he normally works with them in the summer, per diem, like, through their clinic, and then comes back to us when our fall, when our fall sports starts, so his first day, he'll come in and check things a week before for fall generally, and then he's full bore, 12 hours, depending on the fall sports start on the 19th of August, which is Saturday.
So this can wait until the July meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to table this.
Yeah, because it says, it's dated, it says it's as a partner.
Have a second on tabling the item?
Check.
Favor? Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, we've tabled item G. Item H, superintendent recommends Board of Education approve the pre-K curriculum as detailed in your agenda, have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Froda, seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item I, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the superintendent to establish this as reserve funding, with the specific dollar amounts detailed in your agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blowers, second, seconded by Mrs. Oiler, discussion.
I just have a question, will this, will this be done annually, or is this just a one-time thing?
We have to do this annually per external auditor.
So we'll have the same information?
Same information, different dollar amounts, different reserves, depending on what our plan is.
And these are all not to exceed numbers?
Not to exceed numbers.
Doesn't mean you have to move this money, this gives you the ability to-
Yeah, this is just, yes, already, yes, not to exceed, these are the limits for all the reserves, so, and then we can make it, this is zero and that number.
Great, other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, item J, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement between interconnect ED consulting services and the school district for SEL consulting services as detailed in your agenda, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Oiler, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, points her volume not for speeding, discussion.
Walk all over me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, this is a contract, by our attorneys, I just wanted, thank you, thank you.
Your, your feeling, Mr. Russ, is that this, that the cost is correct, that it's reasonable for the services you receive?
Typical for consultants that we work with, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, is there any other business to come before the board?
One that we've removed-
Item B under other consensus, item-
Yeah, I, I didn't want to stop the flow of things at that point, but we probably should have had a motion on that, and then I would have made a motion to table it, for further consideration.
Oh, we removed it, but we didn't table it.
Yeah, so, so I would move item B under other, and then I'm going to suggest that we table it. Motion to table item B for further consideration.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions carried seven zero, any other business to come before the board, thank you for the community.
We don't have another meeting this month, I know, late June meeting, like we had.
Our next meeting is July 12, check for your policy committee meeting, or your committee meeting, the policy committee will be meeting, any, any other requests?
Can we add to the agenda to, adding to the calendar in the CPR class, community CPR class?
Can you look to, if I can be stuck in the calendar as possible?
Thank you. Any other items? All right, folks, it is 10:20, are we, do we have, does anyone have the juice for executive session, or can we find another time not to put off our evaluations, but I think we might not, I may not be as functional at this time.
There's no juice at this end of the table.
Okay, hearing, no juice remaining for executive session, do we wait until July 12th, I know we've got a lot of folks with a lot of things on their schedules, I don't think we are under a time crunch, just need to pay attention in your jobs, is everyone comfortable waiting until the reorg meeting?
Which is a long meeting.
Yeah, that's a long meeting.
Very long meeting, do we want to try for another meeting, a special executive session to discuss the superintendent's and the board's evaluation, that would be a good idea, if that's on me, it would be a good idea.
Would you say yes, based on how long it's taken us in the past to do these, the only way we've ever gotten done is to spend, done timely.
Before we all run away, can I hear what are the absolute no's on everyone's schedule, and then I will send out a request for, and is there anybody, anyone else who needs to, we need to open and close a meeting, so I'll need someone to be present so we can open and close a meeting, but otherwise, I think it's just the boards and whatever space we have, so.
Open and close, you mean have someone recording it, I mean?
Yeah, and we'll have to open a public meeting, then go on an executive session, and then close a public meeting, notices and all that stuff. We don't, no, we don't have to record it, there's nothing, we're just going to open a meeting, go on an executive session, and then close a meeting.
Somebody to open the building for us, if we do it in July.
Yes, and although every time we come up with an executive session, something comes up, we're just like, oh, you know what, we should put this on the board agenda, and then we have a 7:30 meeting with other stuff on it, but anyway, these are things that are absolute, cannot show up in one event and become available.
The week kind of, the 4th of July.
The week after the 4th of July, you were gone?
No, the week of the 4th, the 3rd, 4th, 5th.
How about the last weekend, last week of June?
About 29th and 30th.
You're gone that whole week, were you?
I'm free starting, well, somewhat, the 18th of August.
18th of August?
Sorry, July, July.
Well, that's after our next meeting.
You're not here at the next meeting?
No, I am, I'll be here at the next meeting, but, Friday?
Well, the reorg meeting is the 12th.
Reorg meeting is-
We have it two weeks after that.
What if we try the 10th? Reid, you have any availability, I hate to give it up to one board member to just dictate when we're having a meeting, but if you're not available, uh-
7? Nope, I'm not available that day.
The 10th?
Definitely not.
Okay, it's 10:23, we're going to do this another month, then-
Try this-
We'll try it separate, we'll try it-
Electronically.
Yeah.
A doodle poll, or?
I was going to say doodle-
Yeah, I was trying to, I was trying to hone in on what I'm gathering for a doodle poll, but we'll doodle the whole summer, I mean, we're waiting.
All right, hearing, no good ideas at this point, have a moment to switch her.
And then can I meet with you for?
What's left of us.
What's left of us. Yeah, I, I-
Better be prided.
Brian, may I have a motion to adjourn, is that possible, you know, you said that stuff, what you got?
Brian, the buildings, on Friday, all buildings are shut down?
No.
Correct. So every building on Friday is to shut down, but parked.
Yes.
Is that because we have summer school at present?
Summer school. Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so it'll be closed Monday, so it'll be the 5th, 6th, and 7th that's open.
May I have a moment to go home?
So moved.
For Mr. Blowers, seconds?
So moved.
You only get one. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero, I thought that we were going tonight.